Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 20 meeting of the Ann Arbor City Council. If you're able, please rise and join us for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Would our clerk please call the role of council?
Councilmember Dish?
Here.
Councilmember Harrison?
Here.
Councilmember Watson?
Here.
Councilmember Mallon?
Here.
Councilmember Regina?
Here.
Councilmember Gazi Edwin?
Here.
Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Councilmember Ayer, absent.
Councilmember Ackman?
Here.
Councilmember Briggs?
Here.
Councilmember Cornell, we have a quorum.
If a motion pleased to approve the agenda, move by. Councilmember Briggs, seconded by Councilmember Watson. Discussion of the agenda. Councilmember Briggs.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to move public comment overflow prior to our closed session.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Dish. Discussion, in favor, opposed. The amendment is approved. Further discussion of the agenda as amended. All in favor, all opposed. The agenda is approved. Are there communications today from our city administrator?
No, Mayor.
I understand we have the pleasure of an introduction today from the Ann Arbor Transportation Authority. Come on down, you have the con.
Good evening, Council. Jeff White, filling in for our CEO, Matt Carpenter, this evening. Hope you all are doing well. Wanted to provide just a few updates from the ride this evening. First, a brief legislative update. As I'm sure you all know, the state recently passed their budget, was signed into law by Governor Whitmer. The big question that we've been getting is how did transit do? And actually, quite well. What we saw this year's budget was an increase in our state operating assistance, or LBO, to a number of $271 million. And that basically sets a standard, keeps us where we were at the previous couple of years. There had been some one-time supplemental funding, but what this does is creates a new baseline for state operating assistance for transit agencies across the state, both urban and rural. We know this was a tumultuous budget process, so, you know, we were very pleased with how everything turned out. Huge thanks to our state delegation in Lansing, particularly Rep. Morgan, who co-chairs the Transit Caucus. A lot of the work they did this session really proved fruitful for all of us. In addition to the state budget, the legislature also passed a new transportation funding package. We're still trying to figure out exactly what that language means, but our understanding right now is that it's an annual pot of money going to innovative projects across the state that have regional aspects. So we're, like I said, still waiting for the language to be finalized and really figure out what this means. But you'll remember in our long-range plan, the Ride 2045, we had a few projects in there that would, at least on our very understanding right now, meet those criteria. So if and when there is a call for projects, we want to be ready to go. Update on the federal side, not much to report. We're still awaiting obligation on our loan-oh grant that we rewarded in July 24 -- pardon me, July 2024. A couple of months ago, the Trump administration did reach out to agencies stating that if they would like to change their propulsion technology, the administration would let them. For example, changing from battery electric buses to diesel or hydrogen to propane. We decided not to take the administration up on this offer, so we'll continue to wait patiently for the funds to be obligated. Next, just a couple of operational updates. I'm sure all of you know quite a bit of construction going around downtown Ann Arbor, both short-term and long-term. I know we have some on South Industrial, right by our office, Miller Road, and South State. We just asked, you know, the buses are on the same road that the cars, so please be courteous to them, and we'll continue to update folks, both on our website and social media. Then two more updates. The Ride recently launched a new marketing and ridership campaign. I hope you all had the chance to see some of our new ads. We took a whimsical approach, using some humor, at least my attempted humor, to show folks the money they can save by taking the ride, and had some great partners with Zinger Men's, Joe's Pizza, Underground Printing, to show folks what they could use those funds for, as well as the time-saving using our bus as a mobile office, per se. So those will continue to run, and hopefully you all get a chance to see them. And then lastly, just some community engagement thing. We -- community engagement activities from the Ride. On August 9th, we hosted an open house at our headquarters. We opened that up to the public, really opening up our agency to the public. We had some garage tours, and kids got to run through the bus wash, so we'll continue to do that event. It was a lot of fun for a lot of folks. And then lastly, we will be -- this Sunday, there's a trick-or-treat event downtown. The Ride will be there. Admittedly, I overbought candy, so please, please stop by. And I think it'll last till the 4th if we're in trouble, but we'll see. So please stop by, and those are my updates for this evening.
Thank you so much. We now have a introduction with respect to the staff progress update on -- with respect to the resolution to improve transparency and performance management.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jake Chase. I am the Applications Delivery and Enterprise Business Intelligence Manager here at the city. In 2023, Council passed a resolution titled "The Resolution to Improve Data Transparency and Performance Management." This resolution talked about the need for more data transparency and more visibility into performance metrics throughout the city. This new public data portal is just one piece of the puzzle as we work to address that broader resolution. In June, we partnered with a company called Datopian to implement a product called CCAN. CCAN is an open-source data portal software that is used by municipalities and governments throughout the world. Sam here has been working with city departments for years to visualize data, develop dashboards, and more, and this new public data portal helps to consolidate all the information that he's created and all of the information that other groups across the city have created, and make it accessible in one easy place for the public to use. With that, I'll let Sam take it away. Thanks, Sam.
Thanks, Jake. So, we launched this portal last week, and we've gotten positive feedback already from the public. I'm excited to show it to you tonight. But before I show you this portal here, to fully appreciate it, I'm going to put it briefly into context of what we're upgrading from. So, in 2010, the city launched what was then a cutting-edge data catalog, and you can see it boasts that we are making city data sets freely available to the public in machine-readable formats. So the theory then was we would be transparent by putting data out there, and hopefully citizen scientists would do something with it. And we got a nice write-up 15 years ago in annarbor.com, noting that we were in the good company of Portland, San Francisco, Vancouver, other big cities. So we have had this data out there, but you notice it's not really searchable, you can't look at it by topic, and we're just counting on people to do whatever they can with it. In the course of this data portal project, I've come to appreciate the great work that my GIS colleagues do. The city has these tremendous maps, and this was the page where they were located on. So similar to the data catalog, you browse through it, hopefully something grabs your interest, but there's no way to search by topic. And there are other resources that I know a lot of you are aware of that are scattered around the city website, and I can't even show them here. So that is where we came from. And the first step in improving the city's use and stewardship of data was to get our existing resources coherently organized and accessible, and we are doing it through this open data portal. So I'd like to show you briefly some of my favorite features of this portal and give people a sense of what it does. So, one big difference is that there are tags and topics that you can use to browse the data and resources, along with the search window. One of the things we run into is that city staff will sometimes categorize things differently than members of the public. So, for instance, solid waste, that's something that we might think of as public services within the city, but that a member of the public might think of as the environment. So they'll be able to find it both ways. They could look at the environment tag, and they'd see, okay, I see solid waste is there. They could search here for something like recycling. And then also, if they're on a resource, you could browse by tag. So here, I'm going to look at all the public services resources, and I can see that there's 34 things tagged with public services. So it gives you a few different ways to slice the data there. Another big win is that this is a mobile responsive website. We know that for a lot of our digital properties, most of our users come in on phones and tablets, and this website looks just as good there as it does on a laptop. This site also meets the full ADA criteria, WCAG 2.1 AA for our local government websites, so it'll meet users with a variety of needs. And then we've moved beyond that standard in 2010 of let's just dump a lot of raw data out there. We have the raw data down here for anyone who is able to and wants to interact with it, but I'm more excited about the map section and the dashboard. This is where staff have invested, both data-using staff of the city and also our subject matter experts who know the data inside and out for their particular field, in building these maps and dashboards that let anyone interact with it without needing special technical skills, and I think it makes it a lot more accessible. So, the last thing I'll shout out that I'm excited about here is the fact that we have everything under one roof here. And it reminded me of Engage Ann Arbor. I hope a lot of people are familiar with this website, and my experience with Engage Ann Arbor has been, I come here looking for one thing. So say you want to know when Miller Avenue is going to be repaved, you might come here and just see this, and then you realize, oh, there's a pickleball survey going on right now. I want to give my input on pickleball demand in the city. And I hope that people will come here looking for something like the real-time snowplow map that lets you see when your street will be plowed, if it's up next, and where the plows are right now. And then you might also learn about Progress Sword, our 820 goals, or air quality, or the champion trees of Ann Arbor, or the dozens of other resources that maybe you didn't realize were available. We have this feedback widget that's present wherever you are on the portal. Anyone is welcome to click this and then send us some feedback if you have ideas for something to add, or something to fix, or a way to make this better. We would love to hear it. So that is the open data portal. Are there any questions about that, or?
I just wanted to first say thank you. This is exciting. It's great to see everything under, kind of, under one page, and I've definitely been finding some things that I didn't know that existed. The only question that I have right now is pertaining to kind of where it lives on the site. Right now, on the homepage, there's a press release that makes it kind of front and center, but is there going to be a little icon that sort of lives on the home -- where's that? Where's it going to live?
Yeah, that is a great question. We set up a redirect from our existing data catalog page that points users to this, but I don't think that fully addresses what you're saying, so we should consider how to incorporate a way out of our site to this.
Great. I'd love to have it be very accessible, probably from the homepage, or close by.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. This is super excellent. I look forward to while I'm away.
Great, thank you. Well, it will be ever-evolving, both the portal itself and the resources within it, so I hope you will stop back again and let us know what you think.
Thank you.
You have come to the Public Comment Reserves Time. Public Comment Reserve Time is an opportunity for members and partners to speak to council, the community, what matters to me, and others. To speak at Public Comment Reserve Time, you must have signed up in advance by contact Harrison and Clark. Speakers are all interested or eligible to speak.
So please pay close attention to the time. Our clerk or the time clock will notify you when 30 seconds are remaining and when your time has expired. When your time has expired, please conclude your remarks and cede the floor. As you will observe, there are more than 15 members of the public signed up today for public comment, just to refresh folks' recollection. We run through the first 15 or the first 45 minutes, whichever is longer. After that, we stop public comment at the beginning of the meeting. We then conduct the balance of the meeting up until the closed session. At that point, we will resume public comment overflow for those who wish to continue to speak to council. Our first speaker today is Patricia Hackney.
My name is Patricia Hackney. I live at the Crossings Condominiums in Ward 1. The book Abundance by Klein and Thompson discusses the role of government in accomplishing major public projects, meticulously documenting the pluses and minuses. California's transit system debacles in the 21st century are detailed, but ignored are the 20th century history where the seeds of the transit issues began. The book explains how California's government laws, regulations, and rules are dragging the transit system down. The delays create more expense, all of which is true, but how did they get there? In the mid-20th century, the only large California city where General Motors did not destroy the public transit system was San Francisco. GM used front companies funneling money to end transit projects, all without the public's knowledge. Essentially, a hostage takeover by GM Investments through front companies acquiring 64% of the Keystone System, two LA railroads, and others. Throughout the 20th century, the California transit obstacles continued through the reinterpretation of transit, various definitions, and manipulations. In 1949, GM was convicted of monopoly and violating antitrust laws. To be sure, Standard Oil and other corporations with fiduciary interests were also culpable. Investors plundered and taxpayers burdened to this very day. So this highlights two key points as we assess our own comprehensive plan. First, transit influences land use within Ann Arbor and all commuters. Mass transit for commuters is a viable option. Secondly, a decision without the public having material information of our corporate sponsors is malfeasance, maybe? They are strategic in funding, building, and implementing the comprehensive plan. It would be naive to commit without an exhaustive vetting and public disclosure of our investor and construction sponsors. Details of current, in-process, and projected land use sites are required for public confidence. Then our corporate confidence can be celebrated for our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lisa Jevons.
Hi, I'm Lisa Jevons, 1054 Martin Place. I'm a leader of the Northburns Park Association. I'm here to talk about CA3. As a near-campus neighborhood, we are wondering why the comprehensive plan still does not address university-related land use. For example, why is there no mention of fraternity or sorority houses in the plan? Will they be allowed everywhere? This is an issue of critical importance to our neighborhood, especially now. There are properties being marketed right now as tear-down lots for potential fraternity and sorority houses. This housing type should be baked into any college town plan. We should not have to wait for the zoning code. Also, why is there no assessment of short-term rentals in the plan? How many are there now? Where are they? Where will they be allowed in the future? I'm sure the data guys who were just sitting over here and presented to you could have figured that out and given you a report. Short-term rentals eliminate housing stock and cause nuisances for neighbors. This already should have been part of our almost $1 million plan. What about co-ops? Many of my neighbors, including myself, support co-ops because they offer affordable housing for students and non-students alike. This plan has no plan for co-ops or any ways to help them thrive in Ann Arbor. It states that they will be on the agenda four to six years from now. The ICC has said it can't compete with speculators to create more co-ops. You are causing the speculation with this gentrification plan. We ask the council to address these omissions because the planning commission has not listened. We too have a 2050 vision for our neighborhood, and that is not to be consumed by the luxury student housing industrial complex that you have unleashed. student housing industrial complex that you have unleashed and is now barking at our door. I will say it to you plainly. We will work to replace any council person or mayor who enables the further destruction of housing in our neighborhood for unnecessary, expensive student housing. We deserve better representation, and we will be voting for it in 2026. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jean Leverage.
Thank you. My name is Jean Leverage, and I live in Ward 5. And I'm here today to encourage City Council to approve the comprehensive land use plan and to begin the official 63-day public comment period. I appreciate the hard work of planning commission and planning staff in producing a plan that so thoughtfully promotes the city's values of equity, sustainability, affordability, and flexibility. It's exciting to see a plan that values housing, walkability, and inclusion. I first moved to Ann Arbor in August of 1990 on my 25th birthday. And I just turned 60, so I've been here for 35 years, which seems crazy. According to actuarial tables, I can expect to live between 20 and 25 more years. So the 2050 plan, it's interesting. It's like, right? As I age, I look forward to living in a city that has frequent and reliable buses and possibly even light transit between cities, and that offers walkable streets and protected bike lanes, as well as multi-use paths that are safe from traffic, that provides diverse housing in residential areas to welcome people of all income levels, ages, and abilities, and that makes it easy to go to the grocery store or medical appointments without having to drive. As council, planning, commission, and staff move forward with the 63-day comment period, I encourage you to be extremely intentional about soliciting and listening to the voices of all stakeholders, particularly those who have been historically excluded through exclusionary single-family zoning, who work to combat homelessness and hunger in our community and adjacent communities, and who work to provide access for those with disabilities so that our most vulnerable citizens are not only housed on the very outskirts of the city. Throughout the 60-day public comment period and into conversations about zoning, I encourage City Council to continue to envision an Ann Arbor that is inclusive, dynamic, and flexible in meeting the climate, environmental, affordability, transit, and housing demands of the 21st century, and not to further preemptively limit the ways in which our city is allowed to adapt over the next 25 years to meet our changing needs. And thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sarah Bassuni.
Hi, everyone. Good evening, City Council. My name is Sarah Bassuni, pronoun she/any. I currently live in Ward 5 with my spouse, and I've previously rented in Ann Arbor. I speak in support of approving the latest draft of the comprehensive land use plan and moving it to the next step of the process. I love that today is a book day because I also checked out a book today, just this afternoon. And I was flipping through it, and in the conclusion, I saw a couple of short bits that really resonated with me and seemed topical, and so I wanted to share them with you. This book is Radical Suburbs by Amanda Coulson Hurley. Today, segregation by race and class is turning the hinterlands of many cities into patchwork quilts of white and brown, haves and have-nots. Affluent whites often sort themselves into the neighborhoods with the best public schools and the highest, most stable property values. Surrounding these neighborhoods is a force field that prevents change, and that force field is exclusionary zoning. By banishing lower-cost housing from the area, incumbent homeowners push less advantaged people, who are often not white, to neighborhoods with worse schools, worse access to jobs, fewer parks, and stores and services. And she goes on to point out that enclavism, this desire to cluster with people who are similar to you, can be a driving force in many communities, and it can have some real benefits, like social cohesion. But there's a key drawback that we need to be aware of and cognizant, and that is insularity that can harden into this not-in-my-backyard exclusion, and that we need to counter it. And the part that I really loved was she noted that local governments can make a big dent in inequality by amending zoning laws to include more diverse housing and mixed use. So to City Council, our elected representatives, I'm like, let's do it. Let's make that dent in inequality, and let's start tonight by approving the latest draft of the comprehensive plan that has been sent to you by planning commission and has been through months of public review, comment, and change. Let's move it into that mandated review period and allow us to continue moving forward into a more just, a more inclusive, a more accessible, and a more equitable Ann Arbor that I think we can all love even more. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tom Stalberg.
Good evening, Tom Stalberg, 1202 Traver Street in the heart of Lower Town. I come to you as a 30-plus-year real estate professional who's been providing affordable and workforce housing for 30 years in gentle density. I'm very dismayed about the plan, though I know you're going to approve it tonight, 11 to 0, to distribute it to our neighboring communities, because it's simply not effective. It won't work. It will not achieve its primary goals of affordability, sustainability, and equity. The comprehensive plan is supposed to be the community's vision for the future of Ann Arbor. There's far too few details in this plan for us to envision much of anything. One of the biggest problems in communication between our council and its constituents has been a complaint about misinformation while misinforming the public. Mr. Mayor, there's a flyer that went out with your name on it and my two Ward 1 members where you lament misinformation, yet that flyer's incorrect when it speaks of the comprehensive plan. Mr. Mayor, I read an email that you sent to a constituent complaining about misinformation that's being spread, yet you were incorrect in your statement in that email. So now we're going to distribute this plan that you don't seem to understand very well to our neighboring communities. What this plan will do is the exact opposite of what we want it to do. In the short and medium terms for certain, and likely in the long term too, the price of housing in the most modest segments of our market will be increased. The acceleration, the increase in prices will be accelerated by what this plan will do. This plan makes vulnerable the more affordable, more moderate-priced housing segments while not adding to those segments. The housing will be added at the most expensive level in the short and medium terms for certain. And the tear-downs, to allow that to happen, will be in the modest segments of the market, thus reducing the supply in those segments of the market. With that lower supply in the modest segments of the market, the prices will accelerate. Land costs will be driven up, again, further accelerating the price of new housing because the number-one cost, the first cost, first ingredient to bake in a new house is the cost of that land, and this plan is already driving that up with speculation. I talked to developers. I talked to one this afternoon. It's happening. I've been outbid trying to work to help a nonprofit who's looking to provide attainably-priced housing for ownership. I've been outbid trying to attain land by developers and builders who are speculating. This plan won't work. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kathy Chow.
Good evening, Council. My name's Kathy Chow from Ward 4. I'm excited that the comp plan is at the table today, and I hope you approve this latest draft because I believe the plan, if executed, could have such incredible impact on people's quality of life. I currently live in a residential neighborhood with few walkable amenities. The coffee shop I like to frequent is a 22-minute walk. The closest pharmacy is 30 minutes, and the closest grocery store is 41. Some of my good friends would love to live here if they could afford it, including one friend with a household income of over $200,000 who unsuccessfully tried to buy a home around here this year. My friends are instead 30- or 40-minute drives away. I lived to your car free in the densest part of Ann Arbor for six years, but because my needs, both physical and social, are hard to meet without a car. So I have one, adding another $100 to $200 a month to my living costs on top of the housing costs. Based on the plan, my home is currently marked in the transition zone, and I'm excited. You mean I could have greater access to transit lines to get where I want to go. You mean I might actually have businesses I can walk to. Most importantly, because we're not constraining the housing supply, those beloved friends of mine have the opportunity to be my neighbors and yours. I think you would be honored, like I have, to have them in your life. Throughout the debates about the plan and the public comments I've listened to, I have been struck by how much we all want the same things: housing we can afford, safe streets for everyone, thriving local businesses, access to parks, 15-minute neighborhoods. The plan clearly states many of these as its goals. There are things that are not controversial that can be worked on soon. And yes, there are some who have problems with some parts of the plan, or like more things included, and there always will be. Even I'm not fully happy with some of the changes to the plan. For example, I'd love quadplexes or more in residential areas by right. But an all-or-nothing approach adds costs while ensuring nothing gets done. Every day we delay, another person with new ideas and different perspectives loses the chance to call Ann Arbor their home. I so desperately want to see the vision of the comp plan come to be. And Ann Arbor does such cool stuff. That data portal was so awesome. Let's do another cool thing. Please approve today's comp plan draft so we can move forward towards an Ann Arbor for all. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Paul Foster.
Hi, good evening. My name is Paul Foster, and I'm a 27-year resident of the Lower Burns Park neighborhood in the 4th Ward. I'm not sure why Jen is not here tonight. I'm walking around Ann Arbor, and I'm amazed at the amount of new apartment and high-density housing construction within the city. Projects just getting underway near my home include at Stimson and State Street, where several houses and small apartment buildings have been slated for demolition. I would argue that before council proceeds with further changes to zoning within my neighborhood and the city in general, you should allow that would replace single-family and duplex homes like mine with more high-density housing, council should do the following. Number one, study the impacts of the new housing once it is complete and occupied. Identify the consequences, both positive and negative, and use that to inform further decisions on rezoning. What problems did the new development solve? What problems were created? Number two, follow the money to determine who is benefiting from the development and whether those profits are staying in our city. My concerns about increasing the density of housing within Lower Burns Park includes: number one, increased impermeable surfaces from buildings with larger footprints than currently exist, leading to higher storms, sewer volumes, and potentially flooded basements; number two, higher levels of shading from neighboring tall buildings making it harder to garden and enjoy our backyards; number three, decreased privacy from what could be dozens of neighbors peering down into our backyards; number three, blocked access to sunlight for current rooftop solar panels; four, higher volumes of cars needing to park on our city streets; number five, higher heat loads in the city as trees are removed; six, less wildlife, green spaces, and sunlight for native plant gardens, lower levels of biodiversity, and fewer ecosystem services; and finally, the displacement of local businesses. This has been addressed by previous speakers, but in the case of my neighborhood, a large new development displaced Jack's Hardware, which was moved out of our neighborhood and down onto South Industrial. Therefore, I'd urge the council to vote no on the resolution to approve the distribution of the proposed Ann Arbor comprehensive land use plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lindsey Bryan Podvin.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Lindsey Bryan Podvin. I'm a 15-year resident of Ann Arbor, and I live over in the 5th Ward on Linwood Avenue. And I'm fortunate enough to be a homeowner here. Ann Arbor is a very special place to live, as we've heard by a lot of people who are excited about what it offers and are eager to share their take on what they want improved. I'm here in strong support of the comprehensive land use plan and to move it forward in the process. With Ann Arbor being so special, it requires special attention and care to ensure that it can continue to stay special as it changes. An area that we all know needs extra attention right now is housing. The housing shortage and affordability crisis is a huge problem here in Ann Arbor. Outside of when I'm standing here talking at city council meetings, I'm a social worker and I'm a financial therapist. That means I help people at the intersection of money and mental health. And as you can imagine, housing is one of the biggest factors in most people's monthly budgets, and when we struggle to afford housing, it impacts not just our budgets and the line items in our household, but it impacts our mental health, our ability to feel connected to one another, and to feel like we're a part of a community. And the CLUP will strengthen what's already great about Ann Arbor and offer a path to make our city even better. It helps build a city that works for the people who live here today, for the future generation, and hopefully for more people as they arrive. It can be, we can envision a city that's safe to walk and bike, where local businesses thrive and where people of all ages and incomes can live close to the things and people that they love, whether that's in a single-family home, or an apartment, or duplex, or accessory dwelling unit. Plus, like Kathy, I'm in a potential transition zone over on the Huron area, and I am thrilled by it because I would welcome more shopping cafes and housing in the area that I currently live. This is our chance to say yes to a city that reflects the values of equity, affordability, sustainability, and accessibility for all. I appreciate your continued work. I know it's been a lot of long evenings and receiving a lot of intense feedback, and I hope that we can continue to work to make Ann Arbor a place that welcomes neighbors of all backgrounds who can call it home. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Richard Dokus.
My name is Richard Dokus. I live in the 4th Ward, 1243 Marlboro. And I decided a little while ago to kind of get a feel for what this plan of yours will entail for me and for my neighbors. So I built a scale model. And the scale size is 3/16 to a foot. So every one of those little boxes represents a foot. This house right here is my neighbor's house, and it's actually one of the mid-sized homes in the area. Some are smaller, some are larger, but this is representative. And 16 feet to the top of the ridge is the common size of the homes. This right here, because we are completely ringed and engulfed in transition zones, actually more so than most other parts of the city if you really take a look at your map. And these are the most affordable homes in the entire city. And so if you take a look at what it would look like, and if we had a transition zone, well, let's look at two scenarios. An R1, which is what we are, next to a transition zone. And if I read your literature correctly, that's a 55-foot distance between them. However, if it's transition to transition, then we remove this, and we can do this. Now, it's not exactly certain how close they can be, but they're going to be a lot closer than 55 feet. Now, that house may not ever see the sunset because, well, this building right here, oh, and this building, incidentally, could be 30% higher if it went all electric and probably would. So now we're talking something over 100 foot. And the other thing about this scale, you'll notice that I made them so that they occupy the same footprint. In reality, this would not be the same footprint. It would be many times larger. And instead of having a peak at 16 feet, or 55 feet, or, I'm sorry, 80 feet, or 100 and some feet, it would be flat. So there would be no escaping if you lived next to a ridged home like this, where the sun just simply makes a curve, and for a moment, it's at the peak. Here it is flat all the way across. So I guess, well, wow, that was fast.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
It doesn't make sense.
Our next speaker is Greg Monroe. Our next speaker is Greg Monroe.
Good evening. My name is Greg. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight about the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Having attended meetings for the last six months, I would not characterize the plan as having the broad community support called for in the July Council Resolution Directive to City Planning. Framing this largely technocratic issue as a discussion of ideals has muddied the water and divided the city. Many residents feel like their efforts to substantively shape the plan have been met with inflexibility from city planning. We want an equitable, sustainable, affordable, and dynamic city, but we are mistrusting of the mechanisms this plan employs to achieve that. We are weary of unchecked market dynamics that will accelerate economic disparity and drive up the cost of land, and we are mistrusting of the care and consideration developers with no ties to our community beyond profit will take in remaking our neighborhoods. Over-indexing on housing and tax revenue will not yield the outcomes we desire. Rather than simply building more, we must build smarter, considering infrastructure readiness, natural feature preservation, and public-private partnership to achieve attainable, missing middle, and affordable housing. The appendix cites a playbook from NLC and American Planning Association, yet the plan downplays a key item: land banks and community trusts, which underscore a need for market intervention. They appear in a second-tier horizon of the plan's implementation matrix with a four-to-six year target. Byright development, which this plan expands, has destroyed acres of woodland from our natural features inventory for luxury housing, yet this plan only mentions natural features without explicit protection. It disregards the resolution of the disbanded Environmental Commission, the last citizen-led facet of our government that sought to direct development away from areas with significant natural features in favor of those with abundant transit. This plan is not the Ann Arbor I know and love, and it has not been shaped in a spirit of collaboration befitting of our community. I'm losing faith in my hometown, which has long remained a lighthouse of what is right amidst an increasingly dark national political landscape. We can do our part to address the national housing crisis with increased density, but in my professional experience, I've learned it's easy to forget your bubble, and you need to work with people, not against them, to achieve your goals. Our community is divided. We must face the challenges of the 21st century together, and there's still more compromise to be had. I'm asking you all to be a unifying voice in this debate. Please remain open to resident input as this process continues to evolve, and do anything in your power to direct city planning to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ralph McKee.
Good evening, Ralph McKee, 5th Ward. I have two topics tonight. First is the plan. The plan has nice goals, but it won't achieve them. It's really aspirational, wishful thinking and talking points. Triplexes sound good, but they won't help. There's little vacant land, and the cheaper houses here, say 400 grand, will be replaced by units costing 600 and up. In Seattle, they're replacing 800-grand houses with quads costing 800. That's great there. Here, if you apply that logic, the houses being replaced will be way more expensive, or the units that are replacing them will be way more expensive. The bigger buildings aren't going to be cheap either. No pricing helped for 20 years. Many speakers here that you'll hear from don't seem to realize that there has to be an actual path to achieving success. There won't be any sustainability goals either, because commuters can't afford $700,000 to move in. So they're not going to move in, so no sustainability. The only way to do that is to get commuters off the road. But the biggest downside here is, I'll follow up on what Mr. Dacus said, the wide and deep transition zones that were just widened in Draft 3. Entire neighborhoods are now vulnerable to those big apartment buildings. Many here, Dr. Dish included, and a lot of other speakers tonight, will dispute that, but they are wrong. Please ask Brett. The parcels in those fatter zones aren't adjacent to residential areas, because those areas are now, or will be, zone transition. Be honest, that part of the plan has to change. Next, you had and still have opportunities to actually do affordable housing. You put 6 million of the affordable housing mileage into the general fund. You didn't have to. Now you're selling the Klein's Lot for 17 million with no provision for using it for affordable housing. That's 23 million. Leveraged, 5 to 1 like I've heard from Dr. Dish, that means 116 million dollars. Hundreds of units possible. Instead, it looks like that'll be frittered away, while the plan does nothing. That's hypocrisy. My second topic is ethics. Councilmember I are advocated and voted on a resolution involving a LLC owned half by the union she works for, without mentioning that. Her first defense was that the LLC was separate, and she says Ms. Carr agreed, no conflict. That's flimsy. The LLC had her name on it, and it owns the half the LLC. It's a conflict certainly triggering appearance in propriety. Now she says something completely different. There's a lot of credibility problems here. You should get a legal opinion from Ms. Carr, or better, from special counsel, and you should waive privilege so we can see what's behind the curtain. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Julie Ritter.
Yeah? Good evening, Julie Ritter, old of 4th Ward. Let's open the curtain of the alcove in the Emerald City of Ann Arbor and disclose the mechanisms making things seem what they are not, like the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. You're doing your best to make it seem this plan promotes progressive values the people of Ann Arbor all agree on: sustainability, equity, affordability, and dynamism. The problem is, this plan will not deliver these. Affordability will not be reached because the city has no plan to achieve the needed scale of affordable units. Instead, most affordability is planned as a subset of luxury high-rise development and projected trickle-down effect. This effect has not been seen at scale in any place that has adopted citywide blanket upzoning, and even Minneapolis is running into trouble and now contemplating social housing. Sustainability is obliterated by the scope and scale of all the instruction and the energy needed to power these buildings. Coupled with the loss of the embedded carbon in the buildings destroyed during construction, sustainability is in the rearview mirror. Equity will remain a distant dream. Nothing is more exclusionary than gated luxury high-rises. Even multiplexes that could appear throughout neighborhoods will be market rate, in other words, luxury. As for dynamic, if you consider 7-Elevens, Walgreens, Targets, and other national chains to be dynamic, yes, it will be dynamic. It's too bad you have hoodwinked so many young people into believing that all this construction will bring affordable, family-friendly units, traffic will decrease, local unique businesses will populate the ground floors of all the high-rises, that the carbon footprint of the city will shrink, and all this development will result in a functional transit system that will allow residents to avoid cars. This will not happen. You've heard excellent arguments about this plan, yet you persist in forging ahead, because in truth, this plan is only about property tax revenue for the city. You want as much property tax revenue as you can get
That's right.
...by upzoning every inch. At least be honest. You've created a bold plan for greed and wrapped it in a marketing material in an effort to make it acceptable, but the results of the plan will not support the values you claim to uphold. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jim Pike.
Hi, I'm Jim Pike, and I live over on Pomona Road in Ward 5. I'm pretty confident that y'all are going to approve moving the comp plan forward into the 63-day comment period, and for that, I sincerely thank you in advance. So after you do that, I want you, during that 63-day comment period, to very seriously consider paying significantly less attention to what people who fit into various demographic groups that I fit into say to you about the comp plan. Being of East European descent, pretty much everyone would agree that I am white. Even if it might feel a bit limiting at times, I'm okay with being considered a man. I just turned 57, so for better or worse, I'm getting a little bit old. I've lived in Ann Arbor for about 40 of those years, so I've seen a lot of changes here, and I've owned a detached, single-family house for over 25 of those years. And even though I don't consider myself especially wealthy, I have benefited hugely from generational wealth in the form of both my parents helping me out a lot over the years. It's time for me and others like me to move to the sidelines now and support others who want to share in more of how great it is to live in Ann Arbor. It's time to make Ann Arbor more welcoming to more people. Some of the changes ahead will likely make me and others like me feel a bit uncomfortable now and then, but I welcome that discomfort if it means I get to be part of a growing city that welcomes more people, who I might have the pleasure and the privilege of getting to share my home with. Thank you for listening.
Our next speaker is Alexandra Taylor.
My name is Alexandra Taylor. I'm here tonight as a concerned resident on the Comprehensive Plan, and I'm here for more housing in Ann Arbor and allowing more people to call this fine city home. The question to me is, who is to benefit and at what cost? I'm fortunate enough to call myself a homeowner here in the city of Ann Arbor, and I desire city development in a manner that creates opportunity for people who work here and want to create a life here to establish a foothold in the city. If zoning incentives are developed with these priorities in mind, I believe this is possible. When I look at the latest public zoning map, however, I see the details left specifically vague, and opportunities for developers and investors to maximize profits, like we have seen in our downtown, rather than maximizing utilization of the land and culture we have to offer. This ranges from selling off land that was designated as future park by the voters of the city to developing under the name of middle housing but releasing restrictions on using that housing for Airbnb and other short-term rentals. Change is necessary. Change can be progress for the betterment of most. When zoning is done with broad-brust strokes, disruption is front and center rather than creating affordability or opportunity for residents. I encourage you to continue to understand the desire of each neighborhood and create a plan that reflects opportunity and equity for residents rather than investors. Thank you for listening.
Our next speaker is Brian Chambers.
Good evening. I'm Brian Chambers in the 3rd Ward, 2815 Amber Way. Mayor and council members, thank you for bringing us to this moment. I'm here to vote strong support for receiving Draft 3 of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan and opening the 60-day public review period required by the Michigan Enabling Act. This is the step that transforms years of extensive community input into the transparent, participatory, and forward-looking public deliberation the legislature envisioned. This draft delivers what council asked for and what the consultants were charged to produce: a value-based, implementation-ready plan that integrates housing, economic dynamism, and climate resilience. Its four guiding values: affordable, equitable, sustainable, and dynamic, aren't slogans, they are commitments of how we grow as a community. Draft 3 makes the growth tangible. It calls for compact, walkable neighborhoods near jobs, transit, and daily needs. It protects natural features like the Huron River Corridor, woodlands, and open spaces that define Ann Arbor's identity, and it aligns new development with infrastructure and environmental stewardship. The plan wisely acknowledges floodplain limits, emphasizing housing and mixed-use development well back from the 500-year floodplain and floodway, consistent with the city's floodplain management overlay. The Huron River Corridor offers a once-in-a-generation opportunity to realize this balance. The Equitable Ann Arbor Land Trust has outlined how the corridor can support mixed-income and land trust housing near parks and trails, creating walkable riverfront-adjacent neighborhoods that celebrate nature rather than displace it. This vision reflects the Comprehensive Plan's emphasis on placemaking along transition and hub districts where homes, small businesses, and cultural spaces connect to green infrastructure and recreation. Staff's commitment to update Recommendation 1.4, which covers below-market-rate, shared-equity housing, to make it ongoing rather than four to six years is especially meaningful. It ensures continuity, regulatory refinement, to make it easier for land trust co-ops and community builders to produce permanently affordable homes for ownership. That flexibility embodies the value of dynamism, council added mid-process: the ability to learn, adapt, and evolve. As you open the review window, you'll continue to hear the competing narratives. Pause the plan urges a halt. More neighbors for Ann Arbor urges us forward. I ask you to weigh all of those claims against the public record. Draft 3 effectively captures the concern for infrastructure, nature, and neighborhood contexts with broad support for adding neighbors to reduce sprawl, strength, and walkability and meet A20 goals. Draft 3 responds with this data with maps and a phased implementation plan. I'm running out of time. Please vote to receive Draft 3 tonight and open the public review. It deserves a robust, optimistic conversation about how Ann Arbor can grow thoughtfully, equitably, and beautifully, along our corridors, with our neighborhoods, and beside the river. Yours for equity-based, sustainable development.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Godfrey.
With permission, like this projection, could you make sure that all Ann Arbor state council members see the copy of this? I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
My name is John Godfrey. I live at 2809 Brockman. Thank you very much for, again, having this conversation that's so important. I'd like to speak about the petition to suspend the planning process, which I have just provided to our city clerk. This is a petition to suspend the planning process and to restart it with genuine involvement from residents across all neighborhoods of the city. Over 3,600 actual Ann Arbor residents so far have attached their names, which are in the copies that are being distributed. We want to thank all who have signed.
No management. We do not interrupt.
Mr. Godfrey, thank you.
Should I begin again?
That's your pleasure.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Over 3,600 actual Ann Arbor residents have so far attached their names to this petition that's been distributed. We want to thank all who have signed and given their time to come to these meetings and to communicate with the Planning Commission and City Council. This is truly a public service. In the petition that we're distributing, we've taken pains to remove duplicates. We know people are very zealous, and there's a number of people added their names a number of times. But I'm very disturbed because zealous advocates for the plan that's been proposed have added numerous obscene and fake names from popular culture. We have scrubbed these so you will not be seeing them, I hope. And in the strongest terms, we ask you to condemn all efforts to sabotage the right of citizens to petition their government. The petition remains open, and we urge residents who have not already done so to add their names. The resolution before you today stipulates the plan has been developed with extensive public and stakeholder input. Let's consider the facts, just for a moment. The city did not send notices to residents about the plan. The city did not conduct a statistically representative survey to establish a baseline of residents' concerns, priorities, or vision for Ann Arbor's future. Only a general poll was conducted with no questions about neighborhoods or the city's actual priorities for density. The survey, which was open to anyone with no controls for multiple submissions, got fewer than 2,700 responses, which is about 2% of Ann Arbor's population. This process has consistently lacked transparency, inclusivity, and democratic fairness. Why was the decision made, and who was responsible for making it, for not sending a mailer citywide to all residents just from the start? Why has there been no structured neighborhood-level engagement? Public participation so far, as organized through this process, has been a travesty. Priorities and goals for the plan have been set by elected officials, city staff, and a group of allies. The process has not been inclusive, equitable, open, and fair. City leadership at times has been patronizing and dismissive of residents. Yet a robust series of meetings show that we share common ground, and there is much we can do in the next weeks to resolve these difficulties. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Wendy Carman.
I'm Wendy Carman, 2340 Georgetown, and I'm speaking tonight because I want to go on the record about the Comprehensive Plan process. I'll be repeating a few I'll be repeating a few things that the previous speaker said, but this is because I have served, I'm speaking because I have served on the ZBA for many years, on many city committees, and I was a member of the committee that chose the interface as a consultant. I support the plan, a plan based on affordability, sustainability, and equity. Our committee recommended that these terms be defined in the plan, but they are not. We recommended conducting a scientific survey among residents, but were told by Brett Leonard that that was not going to happen because it was not needed and was too costly. And we were told by Brian Chambers that we didn't want to do that because it might make old people vote for it, vote against it, and we didn't want that to happen. You could have notified all the property owners, and you chose not to. You could have held dialogues with neighborhoods, but you chose not to. People have been misled to believe that the plan will lower costs of home prices and rent for them. It won't. Sustainability, you could have included plans to protect our trees, our wetlands, open space, and significant natural features. You have not. In fact, you even took out the word "wetlands" in the current list of things we were going to protect. Equity, what kind of equity impacts the lowest-cost neighborhoods with transition zones? This has been a top-down process that did not invite homeowners to have any meaningful impact on the plans and the programs that will affect them. You haven't told them even that they won't be able to vote on this plan, and most of them think they will be. You have failed your responsibility to create an authentic and robust engagement process that would ensure that residents played a collaborative role in its development, yet they are the real stakeholders in the future of Ann Arbor. Thank you.
Having reached the 45-minute mark, the balance of public speakers will be heard at public comment overflow. Are there communications today from council? Councilmember Dish.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I'd like to make a few remarks about the upcoming state-mandated 63-day public comment period for version three of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. This comment period will gather from the public, adjacent communities, and stakeholders like railroads and utility companies. They will gather feedback from those entities. Once council releases the plan for public comment, you will be able to submit comments through a form.
Councilmember, perhaps during the...
Oh, must I? This is more like a public service announcement than a...
Perhaps you could ask staff as to how the... Perhaps you could ask staff how the engagement will be done.
Okay. But I don't want to give up my time for that. I have other things to say.
Understood. Who was over here? Councilmember Ackman.
Thanks. I wanted to point people to the first quarterly report of bike lane obstructions and thank Chief Anderson and Ann Arbor Police for putting it together. You can find the report attached to our agenda. It covers the months of June, July, and September, and it is also available through our nifty new Open Data Portal at data.a2gov.org. The point of the resolution resulting in this report is to keep obstructions out of lanes, which is why it called not only for citations and tracking, but also for recommendations for any necessary modifications to the enforcement strategy as well as engineering solutions. One thing that popped out at me as I looked at the first quarterly report is that the top location for violations is on South Main Street, where we've got a nice buffered bike lane laid down. It's been there for a couple of years without any kind of vertical delineator between the lane and the road. And people, I see people continuously using it for loading and unloading as well as for parking despite there being locations for all of those things. So I hope that some recommendations are coming forward to add vertical delineators. I think that's going to be the easiest way to keep people out. We will never have enough police officers to enforce all of the obstacles that we see there. So, thank you.
Councilmember Dina.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, as we're on the topic of dashboards this evening, in addition to the dashboard that was presented to us earlier in the meeting, the Ann Arbor Police Department announced that they've also released a new dashboard that allows folks to dig into the crime data around the city. And I think you can find that at annarborpolice.org/dashboard. The chief put that out noting that crime is down in Ann Arbor right now year-over-year, and violent crime is down, I think, 4% year-over-year. And so there's some exciting data there that folks can dig into themselves. And I will also note that if folks want to learn more about that process, Councilmember Gazi Edwin and I are hosting the chief for a chat with the chief on October 27th at 5:30 at Monty's in Ward 3.
Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm honored to share that I've been invited to speak tomorrow at the 2025 Summit on Ending Homelessness in Lansing. The summit is hosted by MISHDA, the Michigan Campaign to End Homelessness, and the Michigan Network for Youth and Families. I'll be on a panel to talk about rising hope for housing, which I championed by way of a budget amendment. This forum brings together federal, state, and local partners, housing providers, funders, and people with lived experience to share best practices in ending homelessness. I am proud that something we built here in Ann Arbor is being lifted up and recognized statewide. I also would like to invite the community to attend a forum hosted by the Ann Arbor Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, where I will participate in a panel discussion along with Ann Arbor Police Chief Andre Anderson and Washtenaw County Sheriff Alicia Dyer. The purpose of this forum is to provide education about community policing. The discussion will include the meaning of community policing, the community policing philosophy, approaches used by local police agencies, strategies used for training officers on de-escalation, cultural education, the impact of community policing on crime reduction and gun safety, improvements and resources needed to strengthen public safety, particularly for African-Americans, people of color, and women. We will also discuss how community organizations such as Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated can provide support to strengthen police, community-related, particularly for persons in society who are marginalized. There will be a question also about the philosophy and outcomes of the Ann Arbor Driving Equality Ordinance and the cross-section with Washtenaw County law enforcement policies. This event will be held at the Learning Resource Center on Washtenaw Avenue on Thursday, this Thursday, October 23rd, beginning at 6:30 p.m. So hopefully you can join us. Thank you.
Further communication from council? I'd like to request confirmation of the following appointments that were presented to City Council on October 6, 2025, to the Recreation Advisory Commission, Chiro Wit, Jody Hecker, Connor Neville, to the Zoning Board of Appeals, Roberta Sutton. May I have a motion, please? Move by, Councilmember Briggs. Second by Councilmember Ackman. Discussion. All in favor? All opposed? It is approved. I'd like to nominate the following appointment for approval in a one-step process to the Local Officers Compensation Commission, Lawrence O'Connell. Move by, Councilmember Dina. Second by Councilmember Malik. Discussion. All in favor? All opposed? It is approved with eight councilmembers present, pardon me, with 10 councilmembers present, all voting affirmative, thus satisfying the eight-vote requirement. Today is the annual celebration of Community Media Day, which underscores the importance of free speech and accessible media and ensures that everyone has a voice in their community. Here in our community, we are fortunate, of course, that there are many forums in which folks can have their views, perspectives, and input be expressed freely and openly. On this Community Media Day, I'd like to applaud our own community television network watching us all here today, which is indeed a gem of our community since 1973. CTN is one of the oldest and most revered and multi-award-winning access television operations in the country. Their public educational and government channels, PEG, bring city meetings of all stripes to residents' homes, give a voice and a platform to those who wish to be heard, and bring the latest and greatest about our city to the masses. And so on this Community Media Day, please join me in saying, "Thank you, CTN. You are all jointly and severally the best." We now come to the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda? Move by, Councilmember Cornell. Second by Councilmember Briggs. Discussion of the consent agenda. Councilmember Briggs.
Can we pull CA 3?
CA 3. Further discussion of the consent agenda. All in favor? All opposed? The consent agenda, with the exception of CA 3, is approved. CA 3, Resolution to Approve the Distribution of the Proposed Ann Arbor Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Move by, Councilmember Briggs. Second by Councilmember Ackman. Discussion of CA 3.
Thank you. I'm not going to tell you how you can participate in the 63...
We'll get to that. It's okay.
...comment period. But I do want to tell you about the July 21 Council Resolution to City Planning Commission. And I want to raise this issue because many of you feel that there hasn't been public engagement and that public engagement hasn't been heard. But that was a very detailed resolution that, among other things, requested clarification of the relationship between plan and implementation through zoning. That occurs on page 110 of volume three, version three, feels like volume three. It talks about the terms on which infill will happen in the residential category on pages 116 and 113 specifying triplexes, provided widespread ease of implementation. It recommends that zoning implementation in that category encourage the development of smaller, more flexible homes on page 116. It asks for recognition that the University of Michigan has created housing market pressures. You can find that acknowledgement on pages 23 and on page 118. You'll find the addition of University of Michigan-related housing to the list of primary uses and buildings in the summaries of hub and transition. There is a recommendation to explore expedited permitting for duplexes and triplexes in the residential category. That will happen in the implementation. You can see that on page 136. You will find a bonus sentence that council didn't ask for. However, zoning reform alone is insufficient to spur the development of missing middle housing. In addition to streamlining the development review process, the city needs to be willing to use available financial and other incentives to stimulate this type of construction. Page 62. Thank you, Mr. DeHoney. I'm sure that we'll get a giant budget allocation for that. He is conveniently vacating his chair for an uncharacteristic moment. And finally, there is mention of wetlands on page 142, where it is recommended to focus on quality, equity, and ecological benefit in the development of new open-space inventory and categorized natural features on private property such as woodlands, floodways, floodplains, wetlands, and open water to determine the level of protection, restoration, and mitigation for site plan review on private property. 142, which would be an extension of our current natural features ordinance. Thank you.
Further discussion of C 3. Councilmember Malik.
Thank you, Mayor. I view tonight's vote as an important step in our larger city effort to combat an affordability crisis and housing shortage. To put things in perspective, in 2025, the 30-year cost of buying a median-priced home in Ann Arbor now exceeds $1.5 million. The details on that number? So far this year, the median home sold in our city costs over $500,000. With a standard 20% down payment and today's interest rates, that buyer will pay an additional $500,000 plus in interest over the life of a 30-year mortgage. On top of that, as a new home buyer, they'll pay nearly another $500,000 in uncapped property taxes, and that's based on the current 2025 millage rate, not including the proposed one-mill increase on next month's ballot. The takeaway is that a median-priced home today in Ann Arbor should not cost $1.5 million or $50,000 per year, every year, for 30 years. And it's worth noting that these costs don't just burden home buyers, they ripple out to affect renters, small businesses, and our broader community. Of these major cost drivers, interest rates, property taxes, and home prices, we unfortunately do not have control over all of them, in particular, interest rates. We do, however, have control over tax rates. Any proposed new or renewed millages must be carefully scrutinized to ensure they meet true community needs, not just wants, and are proportionate to that need. Lastly, while we cannot directly control home prices, we can control the factors that influence them. Things like increasing the overall home supply, increasing the diversity of housing types, and allowing traditionally smaller and traditionally less expensive homes in more areas of our city is important. This is where the proposed Comprehensive Land Use Plan comes in. In my mind, doing nothing in the face of this affordability crisis is the worst-case scenario. Now, this plan is not perfect, but it has come a long way since the first draft six months ago. I appreciate the tremendous effort that has gone into it, both by our planning staff and Planning Commission, as well as the thoughtful input and engagement from so many in our community, both tonight and over the past two years. I will be voting yes on this item tonight to further the process, but my hope is that over the next two months, all of us, council, staff, community members, and beyond, continue working together to shape this into the transformative, forward-looking document our city needs. Thank you.
Councilmember Briggs.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank everybody for being here tonight. It's great to see a packed room, and I know there's a lot of people with strong feelings about community, but you're here because you care about it and you love Ann Arbor and you want to improve it. So thank you for showing up tonight. We've been on this process officially for almost two years now, and Councilmember Dish talked about the engagement process. I think many of you are familiar with the website at this point and the actions that we've undertaken. I recognize that probably everybody in this room has things that they love about the plan and things that they wish were in the plan or wish that they weren't in the plan. But this is a document that is something that we've developed together as a community, and it's not a new plan. It's built upon the work that we've done in the past. It's consolidation of past work and also new ideas about where we want to head for the next 25, 30 years. And so it's exciting. But it also didn't begin, as I said, in 2023. I was elected in 2020, and at that point in time, we were talking about starting the Comprehensive Land Use Process then, and we had to pause it due to COVID. We've been having this conversation for quite some time. Our land use plan is 30 years now, and they make, at a date in some places. The concept, the idea that we would pause it at this point is not reasonable to me. But this is a part of the process. We are just about to, I'm hoping to vote yes on this tonight. I hope we will move it forward, and then we will begin another public engagement period, and we'll be continuing to ask for feedback. And then I hope that we adopt this plan, and then the process doesn't stop there. We continue to work forward on elements of implementation and looking for feedback in terms of zoning changes and policy changes. And so I hope that everybody will stay engaged and continue to, you know, as we move forward with this. But I do have one question, and that is, how can folks engage in this next 63-day process? Or I can save that for my second follow-up question.
You have time. Why don't you bundle it into this one?
Okay. I ask that question to staff.
Brett Leonard, the Planning Manager, and with me is Michelle Bennett, Principal Planner. Michelle, please share what the next steps for engagement will be.
Good evening. So if this plan is approved for distribution tonight, then there will be a minimum of 63 days for the public to continue to provide their feedback. We are planning to primarily do so through our project page, which is on the city's engagement hub. This will make it much easier to compile all of the comments and provide them for Planning Commission and for City Council. That's going to be a short form. That's going to be a short form up in the top right corner. That's going to ask you in a comment box for you to tell us what your feedback is. Then we are planning as well to share that, as we have been with the emails that come in with Planning Commission. We have selected November 18 and December 16 as the two dates at the Planning Commission where the Comprehensive Land Use Plan will be on the agenda, where the comments that have been shared thus far will be provided in their packet, and for the Planning Commission to also discuss any edits that they may have as well to the third draft. And then that leaves council as well. You all can still provide comments during the 63-day review period.
Yeah, just a couple other items. The 63-day will take us right around the end of the calendar year. We intend to extend that period through to January 5, just because that's chaotic enough time often already. As Planner Bennett indicated, the Planning Commission might have other thoughts. You, as council, might have other thoughts. We would ask that the council speaks through resolution as we're getting to this final phases so that we have the benefit of knowing that your feedback is coming from you as a body, not making me having to pick between one council member and another council member. And then I just want to also add with that form, that's really, we are going to, I just want to highlight, we're going to be directing people to that form for their comments, even if they email us, because that's the most effective way we can share that information unfiltered and most transparently with both the Planning Commission and the City Council. There will not be a limit on the number of suggestions that you do, but that'll be the mechanism that will be sharing all that information. Lastly, the only other outside of that form that we will consider is, a big part of this is sharing this form, this draft plan with our neighboring jurisdictions, with other stakeholders, agencies at the state and regional level. If we get any feedback from them, we will also, of course, be sharing that with both bodies as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to express my profound gratitude for all of the work that you've put in and continue to put in.
Thank you. Further discussion of C 3. CA 3, thank you. Councilmember Redina.
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, I'd also like to extend my gratitude to our exceptional staff, the consultants who have worked on this, the Planning Commission, and Councilmember Dish for sitting in a lot more long meetings than the rest of us have had to, for getting us to this point in the process. As most of the people in this room know, the city's formal engagement process to develop this plan started in the summer of 2023, over two years ago, with a series of stakeholder interviews. Through the end of 2024, there were over 43,000 views on the project website, over 3,100 survey responses, more than 580 people had attended eight community engagement events at our libraries, and 12 additional pop-up events had occurred. Councilmembers and the mayor have since hosted ward-specific town halls, encouraged residents to participate in the process through council newsletters that were mailed citywide, have participated in resident-organized neighborhood meetings, and both planning commissioners and council members heard public feedback at meetings just like this one. Throughout this process, council and the Planning Commission engaged and listened to thousands of members of the public with a wide range of views on housing in our community. Planning released a first draft. We all listened to the public some more and made some changes. Then Planning released a second draft. We all continued to listen to the public and requested some more changes. Now, today, we have a third draft of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan before us, a draft that is the product of more than two years of active and intentional public engagement. As a result of this extensive process, I think all of us know that for many, this draft of the plan does not go far enough toward allowing housing abundance. For some, it feels just right. For others, this plan goes too far, and for others, still, there is a desire to stop any new plan altogether. I share many of the perspectives expressed by some of my colleagues tonight, and I campaigned for City Council to address our housing and affordability crisis. Despite what we have heard from some, allowing more housing does, in fact, impact housing costs. Just this month, I've had conversations with local landlords who have suggested that for the first time in years, they have vacancies in some of their buildings, and they may not be able to raise or increase rents as much as they would like. One also suggested that they are beginning to see a shift in student interest out of smaller homes and into amenity-rich downtown campus-adjacent buildings. At this point, this is all anecdotal, but it speaks to why I will continue to support a plan that does allow for more housing diversity, increased density in places where it makes sense along major transit corridors by Briarwood Mall in our downtown, gentle growth in our neighborhoods, and housing opportunity throughout our community. I will enthusiastically vote tonight to move this draft of the comprehensive planning process into the next phase of what will become a two-and-a-half-year public engagement process. This is the final and long-awaited 63-day review and comment period that is required under state law that we have been talking about now for years. So I will be voting yes tonight, and I look forward to seeing what this next phase brings.
Ann Arbor is changing. Home prices have increased four times inflation over the last 10 years, rents two and a half times. This affordability crisis hurts residents. It increases economic segregation, and because America, racial segregation. It prevents seniors or divorced couples from downsizing, young adults from moving home, it creates more commuter traffic, and this is the trend. The KLOP draft envisions a housing policy that fights these trends, a housing market with abundant housing options, housing choices with leveling prices, a community with fewer commuters. Such a community is more economically and racially diverse. Our cities have, other cities have implemented these changes successfully, and we can too. The KLOP draft envisions most of this change occurring in the downtown, a good deal of this change on major streets like Washtenaw Stadium and down by Briarwood, and some of that change in established neighborhoods. On this, there continues to be disinformation and fear-mongering. We know that people love their established neighborhoods, and we are not going to mess that up. The change envisioned in these districts will be gentle and incremental, limited by height, setbacks, unit count, bed count, lot size, and so forth, in ways that honor existing streetscapes, and in a way that I believe will improve established neighborhoods with corner stores, small local businesses, more housing choice, more diverse neighbors. The draft envisions broad housing policy, but it does not deliver it because it is unable to. That is not its goal. These details will be developed, refined, and implemented, block by block, over the course of years when we begin this conversation about zoning. Some folks ask, where's the affordable housing? Where's the city-built housing? The draft envisions market housing. That is its goal. But since you asked this crucial question, affordable housing in Ann Arbor is full steam ahead, with 1,200 units of new, permanent, millage-supported affordable housing built or in the pipeline, which we look to be completed by 2028, almost doubling our current affordable housing supply. Some folks ask, what about the infrastructure? No current residents' access to water, sewer, stormwater will ever be limited by new development. No development will ever be built without full water, sewer, stormwater capacity. And whenever a developer taps into the system and wants to expand system capacity to meet a project's needs, they will pay to build that expansion. New development does not burden current users, and in many cases, such as stormwater development improves infrastructure for everyone. Some folks ask, too, about historic districts or parks. In each of these case, neither the KLOP nor subsequent zoning will change the current condition. Historic district rules will remain the same. The parks will be untouched, preserved as they are now for residents today and tomorrow. I give great thanks to the Planning Commission, the beatified Councilmember Dish, who serves on both council and the commission, our amazing staff, and the thousands of residents who have engaged so far to bring us this draft today. It has been articulated as having something for everyone and having nothing for everyone, and I think that speaks it about right. The vote today is going to bring forward, initiate a 63-day public comment period. That request for public input is on the level, and I look forward to see whether the draft can be improved thereby. Our goal is to develop a housing policy vision that leads to a more affordable, sustainable, and equitable Ann Arbor, and I am confident that we can do it together. Further discussion. All in favor? All opposed? It is approved. We now come to a set of public hearings. Public hearings are opportunities for members of the public to speak to council and the community about the specific subject matter of the public hearing. To speak at a public hearing, one need not have signed up in advance, but your speech must relate to the specific subject matter of the public hearing. That is to say, the item on the agenda to which the public hearing relates. Speakers in all instances, both here and online, will have three minutes in which to speak, so please pay close attention to the time. Our clerk or the time clock will notify you when 30 seconds are remaining and when your time has expired. When your time has expired, please conclude your remarks and cede the floor. Public hearing number one, an ordinance to amend the zoning map of Chapter 55 Unified Development Code, .11 acres from P parking to C1 Local Commercial, 100 Woodland Avenue rezoning. Is there anyone in house who would like to speak at this public hearing? Is there anyone online who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Mayor, I do not see any callers online for this hearing.
This public hearing is closed. Public hearing number two, an ordinance to amend Section 1207 of Chapter 8, Boards and Commissions, Title 1 of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Ma'am, can you please, can you please sit down so as not to obstruct folks behind you? Ma'am, can you please sit down? Thank you very much. I'm grateful for your help. Is there anyone in house who would like to speak at public hearing number two? Is there anyone online who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Mayor, I don't see anyone online for this hearing.
Ma'am, can you please sit down? Thank you. See no one. This public hearing is closed. Public hearing number three, an ordinance to amend Chapter 55 zoning rezoning of 4.16 acres from Office District to R4E Multifamily Dwelling District, the Crescent rezoning, 2525 Ann Arbor-Seline Road. Is there anyone in house who would like to speak at this public hearing? The process is just roll on up when there's a speaker completed.
Hi, I'm Adam Diskevich. I live in Ward 4. I briefly spoke on this at first reading. If people aren't familiar with this, this is behind the Whole Foods. It's an empty lot right now, and I'd just like to reiterate my support for this tonight. It's much-needed housing in a housing crisis, and this is a great location for this level of density. As far as I can find out, it's been nothing but an empty, desolate lot within living memory, so certainly within mine, but please vote yes on this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Margaret Goodley. I live at 532 Galen Circle, and I'm here to take part in a meaningless performative session and to congratulate you on destroying city rules intended to allow residents to amend or stop building projects. Your ability to change the rules in favor of the builders, blur the lines of zoning codes, and change what is considered a conflict of interest while still promoting proaffordability, pro-multifamily housing is a masterclass of resident deception. I give you thumbs up for a job well done, similar to my very own representative at the very first community meeting regarding this project last year. She gave a thumbs up to the builders, so I'm giving you a thumbs up because from that very start, we knew it was a done deal. Your comprehensive plan and the destruction of rules to dissent on this absolutely vulgar project is reflective of what I call the Project 25 of Ann Arbor. You chip away the zoning area, the area where people can actually complain or give advice for residents. Like today, we were told that because we live in a condo community, we can't submit a petition. At every point, you've reminded us how our concerns do not matter, even our petition. You've consistently congratulated this builder and owner for finally doing something at that vacant lot, which he owns, and that they wanted to put a 7-Eleven years ago. This vulgar monstrosity disregards our neighborhood traffic safety concerns, the traffic debts of senior residents, the public school bus stops, the multiple senior residents, one of which is an Alzheimer's resident, the multiple existing apartments and hotels that we have to deal with, the impact on the park across the street, which has a easement from our condo, and the current frequent failure of the power grid. The abject vulgarity of this too-big, too-tall, too-unaffordable, too-many-vehicle bike is not really a multifamily, not when you have only eight-two bedrooms. It's only equal to your vulgar disrespect for residents to complain.
Thank you.
So my name is James Mill, and I live at 1870 Northbrook Drive across from this property. First of all, I live in a 15-minute community. From my home, I can get to Fuller Park on my bike in 15 minutes. It's a great city we have here, and I love the new bike lanes. What's being proposed to be built is a five-story building outside my front yard. I mean, this is what this plan is doing, and this is what you're voting on today. And, you know, it's outside investors looking for rentals. This isn't, you know, these people aren't going to own the homes. This is not a condo. This is going to be rentals. There's not enough parking for all the spaces that they have, and when asked about that, they mentioned they're going to use adjacent lots for the parking. They said, oh, there's extra parking in the lots around us. We don't have to worry about that. And, you know, they can build a three-story apartment there now, and I wouldn't be here today. I'd be watching the Lions, who are up 14-0 right now, last I checked, but I wouldn't be here if it was like, if they're building what it's zoned for there now. But thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Worszewski at 564 Galen Circle. And he's right, I wouldn't be here either if it was going to be a three or even a four-story building, but a five-story building is way too big for that land, right, that piece of parcel right now. As stated previously at the Planning Commission meeting and written comments at the September 2nd City Council meeting, I am concerned that this apartment building will further exacerbate the existing traffic conditions on Oakbrook Drive and Ann Arbor-Seline Road. There has been a lot of discussion about the safety in this area at the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Planning Commission, and you folks here, too, and rightfully so. We are going to have a tremendous amount of extra foot traffic and vehicular traffic, and if the city doesn't impose any planning conditions on the builder for traffic light and an additional crosswalk between the entrance of Oakbrook Drive, well, Oakbrook Condos crossing over to the Whole Foods where the employee parking is, flashing light for pedestrians, we have a lot of walkers, especially with the elderly, as well as reducing the speed limit on Oakbrook. 30 miles is too fast. They're already going 40. I have written this, I think, to Dharma. I almost got hit. Didn't even see me. So I would really like to see you guys impose that restriction on the builder. And the city should also impose a condition that the builder plant trees and shrubs along Oakbrook Drive to mitigate the nuisance of car lights coming from the underground garage. There will be a disruption for those condos. There needs to be more trees on, you know, whatever side. And lastly, with the added park usage of Cranbrook Park- And lastly, with the added park usage of Cranbrook Park from the residence of the apartment building, the city should ask for impact fees from the builder to offset the increased usage. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in house who would like to speak at this public hearing?
I would say something. This is for people who are here, and they, they think that this city council represents a people in Ann Arbor. Everybody knows they don't. Everybody knows that Ann Arbor City Council represent the ultra wealthy, they represent the interests of the developers, they will never do anything for public housing, for affordable housing. They talk about it ad nauseam, they talk about it, but never have they done anything to benefit people who don't have homes, who can't afford to buy housing here. They've been talking about affordable housing since I first came to Michigan to do my studies.
Ma'am, you will be out of order if you do not relate your, your speech to the specific subject matter of this public hearing, the specific subject matter of this public hearing.
Remember that they are not here to represent your interests, they are not. They are here to present, represent the developers.
Good evening, my name is Nancy Pickus. I live at 560 Galen Circle. I'm 91 years old, and I feel that I'm representing an awful lot of senior citizens that live along Oak Brook Road in Brookhaven and in, yeah, Clarendale. And I fear for the amount of traffic that this apartment will be leashing onto this road. I see people in walkers walking up and down the street. I see people crossing the crosswalk, which is around a circle, around a curve. So you don't see the crosswalk until you're almost on top of it. The senior citizens who walk their dogs, who walk each other, who have walkers, who have wheelchairs. And I beg you to limit the size of this building and limit the amount of traffic that you're unleashing. Thank you.
My name is Blaine Coleman. I understand this plan is supposed to be for density, and I'm for density. I understand this plan is supposed to be for people to be able to get around with, I guess, mass transit, if you ever provide enough. I'm for that. There's just one problem. The city council, as a previous speaker mentioned, the city council is not making any kind of meaningful provision for public housing that people can afford, like you see in Vienna, Austria. The city council is not making any meaningful provision for working people to be able to live here. They're just throwing up these luxury housing units.
Sir, your must, your speech must relate to the specific subject matter of this public hearing, please refer to the specific item on the agenda.
Okay.
You have to say you like it, otherwise you're out.
Good evening. My name's Eileen Ferguson, and I live at 524 Galen Circle in Oak Brook Condos. And I'm very much against this Crescent housing project. I've lived in these condos, I'm an original owner since 1991, and I echo that of what some of my neighbors have already said, and I really hope that it'll at least decrease the number of floors, stories that this building will have, at least. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, Ken Garber, Second Ward. No one has spoken to the sustainability elements in this plan, which was a big part of the Planning Commission discussion back in August. I do agree with Mr. Diskevich that the 262 units of housing are a net benefit for the city, that's undeniable. But the rezoning from Office to R4E would almost triple the allowable density on this site, with the floor ratio maximum going from 75% to 209%. So it's a big upzoning, obviously a windfall for the developer. I think we have a right to ask that all our city standards, including sustainability, be met, or largely met, with this development. And I think the developer acknowledges that. He has spoken to his desire to make an all-electric building, to get certification for Energy Star Multifamily New Construction, and hire a sustainability consultant who has stated that there's potential for 391 kilowatts of rooftop solar on this building. But at Planning Commission, the developer, when pressed to make a written commitment on, on these in the development agreement, would not do so. It wanted to retain freedom of action to perhaps not put in heat pumps, you know, not put in the rooftop solar, and, you know, when asked about this, said, quote, "I don't like putting stuff in writing." It also came out that it's not really an all-electric building. They're likely going to put gas heating in the underground parking. They're planning to include a heating system for some, at least some of the common spaces in case there's prolonged outages. They have some heated portions of the building for residents. But even the unit heat pumps are not in the development agreement. So while I, I think this is a net benefit for the city, this particular project, I would have a much higher comfort level if the sustainability elements were written into the development agreement. I don't see any of them in there right now. I think it's reasonable to include them, and I hope that for future projects, that we make this an important consideration. So, so yeah, you've got a difficult job, you've got to balance, you've got to decide whether this very large rezoning confers sufficient benefit to the city to justify voting yes. So I hope you take all the comments you heard tonight into consideration when coming to your decision.
Is there anyone else in house who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Evening, this is Alex Lowe, 2532 Pittsfield Boulevard. I want to point out the irony of people saying how much they love living in their 15-minute neighborhood and then saying that, that they don't want other people to live, to live there. Very much a, "I like this, but you're not allowed it." I think that's ridiculous, so I hope that you agree with me and that, and that you will vote for this change. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in house who would like to speak at this public hearing? Is there anyone online who would like to speak at this public hearing?
Mayor, we do have a couple callers online. Ross Smith. Go ahead.
Hi. Hello, I'm Ross Smith, I live in Ward 5, but partner lives down by this development, and I have some friends down there too. This, there is a traffic issue in this area. This, this development is not going to impact that at all. The freeway is multilane strode, those are the issue. More people walking around going to help on the side streets. More times people see driver, see walkers and other things, the more they pay attention to that. This is a great density in the area. If I wasn't forced to own a single-family home, I would consider living there. Like, walking distance to Whole Foods is great. I think this is a great asset for the city, and please vote yes.
Mark? Do you have a comment?
Hi, this is Mark Scirbo, calling in from 2017 Fair Street. I'm very excited for this proposal. As I understand it, this lot has remained empty for decades with the existing zoning, so I'm really glad that you're considering changing the zoning. Hope you vote yes. As Ross stated, you know, the, this road is a dangerous multilane road, and I'm hoping that the higher density, you know, makes AAAA think about running more frequent bus service. I'm hoping that in the long, long term, partner of the city can get, you know, bus rapid transit, more protected bike lanes. This area, you know, the shopping area could absolutely use more residents nearby supporting local businesses. So I'm, I'm really excited for this, and I hope you vote yes. Thank you.
Eric Shalaco, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name's Eric Shalaco, I live over Ward 4. I just want to echo some of the other, the points of some of the other supporters for this, for the development of the Crescent tonight. I think too, the traffic concerns that are along that stretch of road are very reasonable. However, it's not going to be exacerbated by more people living closer to their jobs, to school, to work. That's exacerbated by there being a five-lane strode that comes right off of I-94, where people are going to be commuting into town. So the idea is that if this, this being a five-story apartment building means that people can live closer to what they need to do on their, on their daily needs, that means that's less cars on, on the road on a daily basis, and also provides more opportunities for them to shop at local business, shop at the businesses in that strip mall, and also provides a more viable case for AAAA to provide transit access, so if people there don't, don't need a car in the first place, and also having protected bike lanes, so they could also have that as a viable transit option without, without, without needing a car. So yes, please vote yes. Thank you.
Mayor, I don't see any other callers for this hearing.
There's no limitation on who can participate in a public hearing.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Sure.
There a limit on the same group of people who live outside our area?
There's no, there's, there's, there's no limitation on anyone to speak at a public hearing.
I just find it interesting that this person keeps talking about.
Ma'am? 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 So do you wish to speak at public hearing?
One of the architects in the project. At the last City Council meeting, we were asked to submit additional traffic data for the staff to review as relates to the safety of pedestrian crossings. We did submit that data, it has been reviewed by staff, and staff is sticking with the recommendation for the types of pedestrian crossings at the locations that are shown on the site plan. We continue to be willing to work with them within the other information that they want us to provide for increased safety. I have tonight here also with me my architect cohort and my civil engineering member, as well as the owners of the project, should you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this public hearing? See no one, this public hearing is closed. A1, regular, we have before us the regular meeting minutes of October 6, 2025. May I motion please to approve these minutes, moved by Councilmember Watson, seconded by Councilmember Redina. Discussion of the minutes. All in favor? All opposed? The minutes are approved. B1, an ordinance to amend the zoning map of Chapter 55 Unified Development Code, .11 acres from P parking to C1 local commercial, 1007 Woodland Avenue rezoning, moved by Council Member Dish, seconded by Councilmember Watson. Discussion please of B1. Councilmember Dish.
This rezoning from parking to local commercial will support a more functional and aesthetically pleasing service area at Argus Farm Stop, located at 1007 Woodlawn. The project has the full support through the citizen input process, and it's been done in close collaboration with the neighboring Buddhist society. The rezoning is first aligned with Ann Arbor's 20-minute neighborhood concept, second supports local farms and producers through everyday access to their goods at Argus, which provides an 80% profit share with farmers, and finally supports continued operation by Argus in their current location off Packard. So the Planning Commission recommends approval, and I will be voting yes.
Further discussion of B1. All in favor? All opposed? It is approved. B2, an ordinance to amend Section 1207 of Chapter 8, Boards and Commissions, Title 1 of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor, moved by Councilmember Ackman, seconded by Councilmember Dish. Discussion please of B2. Councilmember Ackman.
I don't have a lot to say that I didn't already say at the first reading, but I just wanted to remind people that this is basically codifying a process that's already been, that the Transportation Commission has been working on for the last year or so to have a better, more refined and defined review of crash data to inform responses to those crashes. So I look forward to your support.
Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It is approved. B3, an ordinance to amend Chapter 55 zoning, rezoning of 4.16 acres from Office, from O Office District to R4E multifamily dwelling district, the Crescent rezoning, 2525 Ann Arbor Celine Road, moved by Councilmember Dish, seconded by Councilmember Cornell. Discussion please of B3. Councilmember Dish.
First, I want to thank everyone who's spoken tonight on this project, and it is clearly a change in a neighborhood, so this is the kind of transition that we are starting to see. This proposal is to rezone 2525 Ann Arbor Celine Road from Office to R4E. Planning staff and Planning Commission find R4E appropriate for this site, given that it's adjacent to Cranbrook Village and Cranbrook Village Shopping Center. So the project will create apartments in walking distance from parks and shopping, restaurants and other retail services, also buses. I don't want to get into the details of the site because we approve the site plan in a minute, but I will say, as we heard earlier, that the 4.16 acre site is currently vacant and has been vacant since 1947. Is this consistent with existing land use plans? The land use element recommends office use for this parcel. Why is that all of a sudden happening? Okay. So what about residential? The Office District actually allows the multifamily residential that is proposed by this project. What about height? This is proposed to be a five-story building. R4E has no height limits, and office zoning would not limit the height at this site. How about density? The density proposed is nearly, but not quite, three times the density currently allowed. So in other words, the project nearly triples the allowable residential density for the site, and how is that justifiable? Well, again, it's going to be not fully comfortable for people who live there, but the fact is that Ann Arbor has not seen a demand for more office space in recent years. In fact, we have higher vacancy rates. While housing continues to be in demand in Ann Arbor, average monthly rent is up in the five years since, before 2023, up 30%. I have somehow written here 1933, and that can't be true. So, and moreover, increasing housing supply is a stated policy priority of City Council for affordability, which a lot of literature will tell you it will do, and this city has voted for an affordable housing millage, which is one strategy for achieving affordable housing. Increasing supply is another, and as Councilmember Redina mentioned earlier, anecdotally, rents are going down. There are traffic improvements, which I pass the ball to someone else. On.
Councilmember Ackman.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I wanted to acknowledge the petition that we received.
Um, first of all, I wanted to acknowledge the petition that we received by nearby residents at Oak Brook. Uh, we received that this morning and I appreciate the engagement from the community. I went to that initial public engagement meeting over a year ago now. Um, one of the issues that's come up during this process relates to traffic and safety for pedestrians in the area, um, particularly along Ann Arbor-Seline. It's four lanes, uh, 45 miles an hour traffic. My husband's been reran there. There's been a number of things that have happened on that corridor. Um, so in the last reading, we talked about the possibility of a trafficked signal and at that time, the study was still outstanding. Um, as a public commenter indicated, that review has been completed and staff has determined that a crosswalk is needed at the existing site drive entrance that meets safety concerns for pedestrians in the corridor. Um, they reviewed for a traffic signal and do not find that it's warranted and the reason why is because it showed that while a signal could technically meet one of the engineering warrants and I'm, please correct me, staff, if I get any of the technical language wrong. Um, they found the justification to be thin and more importantly, that a new signal in this area on a 45 mile an hour corridor like this one could actually make things less safe by introducing more high-speed and rear-end crashes. The safer, more effective approach here is to slow vehicles down and not through a traffic light and to make pedestrians more visible through design, things like high-visibility crosswalks, flashing beacons and lane narrowing treatments. I wanted to highlight that this corridor is already part of our roadway rightsizing project, which is looking comprehensively at ways to reduce speeds and improve safety on our major streets. Um, so given all that, I'm comfortable moving forward with this plan. The housing proposed here meets a real community need and the developer is required in the site plan to install a crosswalk on Ann Arbor-Seline and as well as Oak Brook. Um, the crosswalk is shown on the plan. The final design will be determined during civil plan review and it must meet safety standards for the five-lane corridor incorporation of our, our FBs, a potential refuge, refuge island, et cetera. That's being determined, uh, but it will be determined by staff. Um, you know, I think the other thing that I want to highlight is how this project is kind of indicative of what I think we're going to see in a lot of areas, especially in the transition zones, which often are along these multi-lane corridors. And, uh, it's going to come up again and again because we're putting people there and we want people to be able to traverse safely. Uh, so in my mind, the, you know, results and the actions from the rightsizing study really can't come soon enough because as we add more housing to these areas, um, we need to make sure that we're also improving the corridors for people to get around, no matter how they get around. Thank you.
Councilmember Briggs.
Thanks. Um, I am supportive of this, um, rezoning tonight, um, but I, one, I just have a process question, um, for staff. I know we had received, um, a protest petition and I heard, maybe understood through the public comment that it didn't qualify because of the condo association. I was just hoping staff might be able to share a little more insight into that.
Good evening again. So the protest petition language is specified in state law and it specifies a very specific buffer of a proposed rezoning site and, and that is 100 feet. In the case that we had received several over the last couple of days, several protest petitions from individual condominium owners. We don't accept a individual condominium owner to speak for the common ownership property of a overall condominium development, just like that association board likely wouldn't allow an individual common owner, condo owner to speak on behalf of the entirety of them. We can't accept an individual owner to speak on behalf of that. Subsequent to that, we did receive action from the condo board association. We shared that feedback with them once we did and that appears to do, it does appear to meet that threshold. So, um, my conclusion of that is that this would require the eight vote minimum for, to, of, eight affirmative votes to affect that rezoning because we received the correspondence from the condominium board. I think that came in about a little after five o'clock or something like that.
Thanks for.
Does that answer the question?
Yeah, it does. Thank you. And this is a requirement of state law you mentioned.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks so much.
Further discussion? Uh, for my part, I'm going to vote in favor of the, the rezoning tonight. Uh, as we've discussed and heard over the course of, uh, well, today's discussion with respect to the comprehensive land use plan and over the course of, uh, months and years, uh, we do have a housing crisis in Ann Arbor. Uh, it is crucial for, uh, people who work in Ann Arbor to be able to live in Ann Arbor. It's crucial for people who live in Ann Arbor to be in a position to, uh, to downsize if they want, to welcome their children back to town if they choose to come. Um, and we need to have housing, housing supply for, for all those purposes. Um, this area has of course lain fallow, uh, for, uh, for a number of decades, uh, and it is important that we as a community, um, you know, utilize, utilize our land for, uh, for our, uh, our long, our long-term benefits. Um, I further, uh, after having reviewed the, uh, the traffic input from, uh, from the petitioner and then of course crucially, it's reviewed by staff, uh, believe that the, the development as proposed, uh, will indeed be safe. The addition of, uh, new, uh, new pedestrians to the site, the addition of the new pedestrian infrastructure will, I believe, um, enhance, uh, walkability, uh, within the location. Um, as more people, uh, live here, uh, more use the site, uh, walk to the park, walk to the, uh, the shopping center, um, the concept of pedestrians in the area will be, uh, more frequent, more common, uh, will be subject to notice, uh, more readily. Uh, that I think is for, uh, the good of, of everyone who lives there presently and certainly also for the people who, um, have yet to be our neighbors. Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It is approved with 10 councilmembers present, all voting in the affirmative, thus satisfying the eight vote requirement. B4, resolution to approve the Crescent Site Plan and Development Agreement 2525 Ann Arbor-Seline Road. Moved by Councilmember Dish, seconded by Councilmember Cornell. Discussion please of B4. Councilmember Dish.
Hi, I'll be quick because we've had a lot of discussion of the project. The site plan does propose to construct a five-story, 262-unit apartment building. There will be 268 vehicle parking spaces underneath the residential units and then 29 surface spaces, which is not too many on the surface, which is nice. Uh, the project has changed in response to community feedback. Uh, by putting the parking underneath, that lowered the height of the building by four feet. The petitioner received a couple of variances, which are, I don't think all that significant, but if anybody wants to ask, you can. Um, and a development agreement has been prepared to address public water main, onsite stormwater management, public and private sidewalks, the installation of the crosswalks on Ann Arbor, uh, Oak Brook Drive and Ann Arbor-Seline Road, and the redesign and construction of the curb cut on Ann Arbor-Seline Road, which will all, also help support pedestrians. Um, the, it is correct that the developer has agreed to energy efficiency standards, but other than that, nothing more than is required by code. Again, we are not as a city in a position to require anymore. We cannot require 100% electrification. We cannot require, um, no gas hookups. And so if a developer is not willing to provide that, um, that's not something that we can continue to press for. Um, for all the reasons that were articulated in the discussion of the appropriateness of the rezoning, I think that, um, I feel supportive of this project, as was the planning commission, as being consistent with many city goals. We cannot expect every project to bring us everything.
Councilmember Briggs.
Well, I understand that we don't have a commitment to sustainability, or, you know, to all the sustainability elements that were mentioned, you know, within, um, the context of the planning commission conversations. I hope that, that, um, all the attempts will be made by the development team on this to, um, deliver on those, um, on those elements.
Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It's approved. C1, an ordinance to amend Chapter 55 Unified Development Code rezoning of one acre from TWP Township to R1A Single Family Dwelling Thai Zoning 1155 Arlington Boulevard. Moved by Councilmember Watson, seconded by Councilmember Malik. Discussion please of C1. Councilmember Dish.
This is the rezoning of a one-acre parcel whose annexation was approved by the state on June 3rd, 2025. The properties within city boundaries and municipal water and sanitary sewer are available. The zoning, uh, designation proposed, R1A, is consistent with adjacent zoning surrounding land uses and the comprehensive plan, and so planning commission recommended approval at its meeting of March 18th, 2025, and so do I.
Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It's approved. C2, an ordinance to amend Chapter 55 zoning rezoning of 5.7 acres from TWP Township to R4A multifamily dwelling district, the Village of Ann Arbor 32600 Pontiac Trail. Moved by Councilmember Harrison, seconded by Councilmember Dish. Discussion please of C2. Councilmember Dish.
Just for your information, uh, this is a 5.71 acre site that is adjacent to the Village of Ann Arbor parcel to, um, which I think, never mind, it abuts it to the east. Um, this annexation will be added to the land holdings of the Village of Ann Arbor project, um, although no development of 2600 Pontiac Trail is proposed at this time. We're seeing this parcel now, a little bit after we already rezoned, um, the larger bulk of this project, um, because it was inadvertently omitted from a previous ordinance on other related parcels. So we're just doing a little cleanup here.
Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It's approved. C3, an ordinance to amend Section 5.16.3.F of Chapter 55 Unified Development Code of Title 5 of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Moved by Councilmember Briggs, seconded by Councilmember Dish. Discussion please of C3. Councilmember Dish.
So the title of this agenda item, marijuana business school buffer removal, may raise concerns. So let me clarify, the proposed ordinance removes what is currently a mandatory citywide buffer of 1,000 feet between marijuana businesses and schools. The state allows cities to reduce or eliminate this buffer. If council approves the proposed ordinance or a modified version of it, um, it does not mean that marijuana businesses will operate right next door to schools because each and every one will be removed by city planning commission for compatibility with context. The mechanism for that review in the Unified Development Code is, uh, is in the Unified Development Code and, um, it is provided through the special, uh, exception, special exception, um, use standard, sorry. Um, and what that means is that planning commission considers each and every proposal to low, um, to locate something that is a special exception use, marijuana facilities included. You have to consider compatibility with the existing and planned surroundings, whether the use will affect the use, peaceful enjoyment and economic benefit of the immediate neighborhood and vicinity, and will there be an effect on environment, natural features and intensity of traffic? Um, there is a special provision for marijuana built, um, projects to provide 24-hour security monitoring and observe limits on operating hours. Um, and if this proposed ordinance passes, it will add an extra requirement to the SEU application for prospective marijuana retail businesses. They have to list nearby schools in their special exception use applications. So, um, uh, this is what this proposes to do and I believe there is more to say.
Further discussion of C3. Councilmember Briggs.
Yeah, thank you for providing that background first. Um, so the reason that we're considering this tonight, right, is because, um, there were, there were two, uh, marijuana retailers in the fifth ward that would have lost their license due to sort of, um, state regulatory changes that have us reviewing our, um, our definition of K through 12 schools differently. And so we've made accommodations around that kind of temporarily, um, because of, um, their adjacency to a pre-K, K school, Daddy Montessori in the fifth ward as well. Um, however, I don't think that the implication of that change and sort of the benefits to existing fifth ward businesses should have sort of the, the full expansive, um, the full removal of a thousand-foot buffer from all K through 12 schools across the community. I think that we can, um, recognize that probably within the context, um, of our community, there's an expectation that, um, or a preferred, a preference from, for many that, um, we don't see a marijuana business sort of setting up shop adjacent to a, um, a school. And so, um, and so I'd prefer to have, you know, potential future retailers not take their time to even explore sites like that. Um, there are, there, if further distance might be, um, warranted as well, but I would like to, um, recommend a proposed amendment and if Ms. Bowdre could share that around, I will discuss that more. So that is coming around. It's, um, a fair amount of edits, but what it comes down to is essentially, um, would create a 100-foot buffer, um, for marijuana, um, related establishments, um, from, from a K through 12 school and that would ensure that, um, they are not adjacent, um, to a school. And, um, in addition, would keep the current existing SEU, um, addition sort of components that have been added to the, um, process where in the application proximity from a school would be listed, um, and this would still be a criteria for review for additional distance, um, for a point of, I think I probably need a second, so I probably should stop there.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Dish. Councilmember Briggs.
Okay. So, um, in state law, um, liquor stores are required to be 500 feet from a K through 12 school unless there's sort of, um, unless that commission decides to waive that section. Um, so there is a standard sort of separation that we've come to, um, um, except for, um, other types of, um, uses in our community. Um, and I think that establishing a minimum standard is still relevant here, um, and then the planning commission can still continue to, um, review through the SEU process, um, you know, whether that, a 500 or continuation of that thousand-foot buffer is appropriate on a case-by-case basis. But it creates more consistency across the entire community, um, and it's not just a basis of kind of who turns out to a meeting in which neighborhoods.
Further discussion of the amendment?
Sorry, what is the, I, I'm, there was a distraction. Um, what limit, what is your minimum that you're proposing?
100 feet.
That's what I thought. Okay, you mentioned 500, so I was confused. Sorry.
Councilmember Dish.
I want to actually speak to it. Um, I, you know, I think that the, 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 I, I want to say SEU, but I just don't want to say that anymore because we have another SEU. So the special exception use process would, I believe, serve the purpose that this minimum standard of 100 feet is, is being proposed for. And yet, I think that, um, I think that it's completely fine to limit the discretion of the city planning commission in instances where a marijuana facility is proposed for, in that, you know, 100 feet away from a, or well, yeah, 100 feet away, 99 feet, uh, from a school. I think because people in the community do have concerns about that and we are a legislative body and so we can affirm the expertise of the technical body and actually trust it to make good judgment and still set out a minimum that is, I don't, in my view, not terribly restrictive. And so I, I support this and thank you for bringing it.
Further discussion? Is the amendment friendly to the body?
It is. I do have one question. I don't have staff. Sorry. Should I just?
Then, I think the answer is perhaps then not yet.
Not yet, not yet, not yet.
Councilmember Gauzy had one.
Um, I also appreciate you bringing this forward, uh, Councilmember Briggs. One of the things that I've been thinking about, and maybe this is a question for staff, is what I'm, and this is really just out of interest and as we begin the comprehensive land use planning, you know, process and implementation, is this would likely affect schools, you know, schools in transition zones, right? Um, and I'm wondering if we could see a map of schools that exist in transition zones because those would likely be affected by, you know, 100 feet or not.
Um, I don't have that now, but yeah, that's definitely something we can put together.
Okay. That'd be great. Thank you. And I also support this.
Further discussion of the amendment? Councilmember Ackman.
I support having a distance minimum, mostly just because this is not my area of expertise. But as I looked around, uh, the state and looked at, you know, this 500 limit that we have for liquor, it seemed like it would be reasonable to kind of echo what we do for liquor establishments. we do for liquor establishments. And then, in my perusal online, it seemed like communities that had done less than 1,000 did 500 feet. I don't know what's right. 100 seems super close. Is it meaningfully different than 500 feet? And I understand that the reason why this came to us is the location of the Montessori school near to our downtown, so I understand why it's being selected. I guess, you know, I'll support the change, and I support moving this to second reading, and I look forward to hearing from members of our community about how they feel about this change.
Councilmember Briggs.
Just on that latter point, I just wanted to share what the distance is, the reason I did not propose 500 feet. So, the, one of the existing retailers that we, is 250 feet from Dottie Montessori School, another one is 300 feet from Dottie Montessori School, which is a pre-K school. So, the 100 feet certainly allows for, you know, this concept of adjacency, and the SEU, the special exception use process can expand upon that within the Planning Commission per view, and on a case-by-case basis.
Further discussion of the amendment? All in favor of the amendment? All opposed? The amendment is approved. Further discussion of the main motion as amended. Councilmember Malik.
I guess I just had a question, either for staff, or potentially I saw Mr. Reiser come on screen momentarily, but based on, at the state level, there were some tax changes with the budget passage a few weeks ago. These were substantial tax changes, and there was kind of an agreement that with the tax changes, part of the larger deal would be further reform to the marijuana industry at the state level. Of course, this is still in the realm of what-ifs. These haven't happened yet, and I think there's just been a number of bills proposed, so by no means have they passed, or are they in effect. Do any of these changes tonight, is there any benefit to waiting to see what the state legislature does? Of course, this could be a long waiting game, so I understand that, but just based on what we know so far.
Well, you're 100% right that Mr. Reiser probably has a better handle on those changes than I do, but generally, I would say that this industry is definitely going through some transitions, and it has been. And part of, part of that is, from what we had originally approved, we have a greatly reduced number of active open businesses than what we did at one time, and I think that's indicative of some of the evolution that's happening with this industry. And so, regardless of what taxation changes or other regulatory changes, I do think that, not unlike housing in a way, that if this is, this is a business that we, a business category that we think that is important to support, honestly, making it easier for businesses to do, that's, I think, where the, not to speak for the Planning Commission, but I think that's where sort of coming, they were coming from, perhaps with the potential change to eliminate the cap, is that when we have a regulatory structure that sort of pigeonholes a retailer or a business at one location, and maybe that doesn't turn out to be the right business, we are, we're adding some local barriers to that business or a different business thriving. So, generally, I would say these changes are actually relaxing some of the standards, so whatever regulatory changes happen, these are probably going to facilitate that. But I'll leave it to Mr. Reiser if he has any more information on what those actual changes would be.
Good evening. I'm not aware of anything in the recent legislation or pending legislation that's going to impact where these facilities are going to be able to be located. The recent legislation, obviously, was about the 24% wholesale tax, which is being challenged in court, but this is, I think, separate from, from what the state's looking at.
Wonderful, thank you. Further discussion? The main motion is amended. Councilmember Cornell.
I think it's important to point out that as part of these changes that the city is considering and that we're discussing here tonight, the state is, there's still state laws that are, govern cannabis facilities and dispensaries, and so, this is an area where the city certainly has some discretion to apply to our ordinances, but this is a heavily regulated industry. I received an email today from somebody who is concerned that if we reduced this buffer or eliminated it altogether, that kids would be able to walk into a dispensary, that if you've ever been in a dispensary, you know that that is not possible. And I do think it's also important to point out that not only in addition to these changes not affecting how the industry is regulated at the state level, last year, the city received 1.5 million in excise tax dollars from this industry, and this council chose to put it to really good use, and used it to supplement our budget with programs for youth, substance use disorder counseling. While it's easy, I think, to point out that not everybody is, loves a marijuana facility, we are all different, I think we all love the extra tax dollars that it brings in, and that is a business case to consider. I think it's a financial benefit to the city that should be considered as part of this conversation.
Further discussion? Councilmember Briggs, sorry.
I just wanted to express a little bit of gratitude to staff who helped with creating a language around the amendments today, but also, in particular, we have exceptionally dedicated staff who show up even when they are on vacation in Europe, and it's, I think, six hours difference, and maybe in the middle of the night where they're at, so much gratitude to our incredible staff that does so much work for us. Thank you.
Councilmember Gosey Edman.
Thank you, Mayor. And, you know, I appreciate this conversation. You know, one of the questions I also have, and maybe this is for Mr. Leonard, you know, I understand the benefits of the marijuana market, I also understand the benefits of the use of the excise tax. I think we've put it to really good use, including supporting, you know, the Rising Hope for Housing Program. When we discuss removing the citywide cap, one of the things that I do think about is the fact that some of these businesses, for example, dispensaries tend to be overrepresented in low-income communities, and I think about, you know, concentration and distribution. I'm wondering if we could also get a map showing that kind of concentration and distribution currently? I mean, it's probably easy.
Where the facilities are located.
Yeah, where the facilities are.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Actually, I would have to check to make sure it's up to date, but we have always maintained that map actually on our website, because we have locational restrictions from how close a business can be to another business.
Oh, interesting.
But I can follow up and send a communication to the city administrator to share with the council once I have verified that that's been updated, and it might be helpful for it to reflect those facilities that are currently closed or temporarily shuttered, or we anticipate might be permanently shuttered.
Yeah, that would be great. And then also kind of overlaying in the, in the transition zones, in the wards, where do you see schools?
Yep.
Just out of interest. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Watson.
Just to piggyback a little bit on what Councilmember Cornell was saying, for fiscal year 2024, each jurisdiction received $58,200 per licensed marijuana retail store. So, if you look at the calculation based on, at the, at the time of the last reading, the seven unused marijuana licenses out of the 28 that could be allotted, that amounts to $406,000, which is approximately how much money the city used in the first year of its Rising Hope for Housing Program. It's also about half of what we put into eviction prevention over the past couple years. So, it's a very significant amount, and I think what my colleague Councilmember Malik was also saying is, the marijuana industry is under, or could potentially be under some strain after the taxes on the wholesale side of the business. And I think maybe that, that's an argument to say that if, if a marijuana seller has a location that they've identified that works well, it might be, it might be helpful, I think, to allow them to locate there, and I, so I think, it probably, even with those changes, I think it is timely to, to examine this buffer. I think, you know, 100 foot is sensible, but I think it's always something to monitor. I do hope that on the, maybe with our state, the assistance of some of our state representatives, we can think about how the state divvies up marijuana revenue, because to me, like, I think it should be a little bit more based on how much marijuana is sold within a community, and not how many discrete businesses, how many licenses are being sold, but that's, I think, an issue for another day, but I do worry about consolidation in the industry and the fact that there are fewer licenses in the city, because that's fewer, that's less money for city programming.
Councilmember Harrison.
And piggybacking on, thank you, Mayor, piggybacking on to what a couple of my colleagues have mentioned, I want to remind folks that the, the impact that marijuana has had on communities of color and also the war on drugs, Rising Hope for Housing did help to step into that gap, did help people avoid homelessness, but it also was about preventing the emotional collapse that often precedes eviction, relapse, or crisis. The hope was it would offer trauma-informed case management, designed to understand why someone might be struggling after incarceration. It provided eviction prevention resources before a housing court notice arrived. It offered flexible financial help for emergencies, because often $200 towards a utility bill can prevent the $2,000 emergency that follows. And it included social-emotional support and community connection, because people heal faster when they know that they are, that they belong somewhere. So, just kind of wanted to, you know, put a note on that. Thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? As amended, it is approved. C4, an ordinance to amend Chapter 40 Trees and Other Vegetation of Title III, Parks and Public Grounds of the Code of the City of Ann Arbor. Move by, Councilmember Heckman, seconded by Councilmember Cornell. Discussion, please, of C4. Councilmember Heckman.
Oh, my gosh, this has been such a long time coming. Like years, and Mr. Reiser knows. So, I'm happy to bring this forward tonight, because it's a small but meaningful step toward encouraging biodiversity and supporting pollinators. About 75% of all plants rely on pollinators. Those are bees, butterflies, beetles, and in Michigan, nearly a third of our crops and most of our wild plants depend on them. These species are struggling because of habitat loss, pesticides, and climate change, and the best thing we can do is make space for them in our yards, in our parks, and throughout the city. For years, our city has encouraged pollinator-friendly yard care. We've promoted Lomo May, adopted a resolution to support pollinator habitat, and launched the Pollinator-Aware Yard Care Program, but our code in some ways hasn't really caught up to that. So, the current ordinance limits vegetation, the one that is in law today, limits vegetation outside of a planned garden bed to 12 inches in heights, 12 inches in height, and that's meant that residents who are doing exactly what we've encouraged them to do, planting native species, creating pollinator habitat, have sometimes been ticketed and/or told to cut it all down. This update fixes that. It shifts our focus to what actually matters, public safety, not appearance. Property owners will still need to make sure that vegetation doesn't block sidewalks or streets, obscure sightlines, or create hazards for people walking, biking, or driving. But beyond that, people can plant what's good for pollinators, for stormwater, and for the environment as a whole. I want to be clear, because I know that some people have hopes that we are going to make changes to the easement, that, that area that's between the sidewalk and the road, but to be clear, this revision only applies to private property. It doesn't change the rules that we have in place for public easements or the lawn extension at this time. That's an area we can revisit separately as we continue to update these policies, but right now, this is a practical change that aligns with the city's values and the way that many residents are already caring for their yards.
Councilmember Malik.
I had a question, and it could be for councilmembers or potentially staff. Has this been reviewed by the former Environmental Commission or the current, well, I know it hasn't been the current Sustainability Commission, but I'm just curious if they've had a chance to review it.
Is there staff?
I don't believe that they had. It's been reviewed by certainly internal staff, sustainability and transportation and community standards, and public, public works, public services, but I don't know that it has been vetted by commissions yet.
Councilor Heckman.
So, to provide a little bit more history about this, which maybe I should have opened with, this originated in the Environmental Commission, lo, so many years ago, and actually before I was on city council. So, I inherited, well, we inherited some edits to Chapter 40. I took those, and we needed to basically take a step back, because at that time, those edits didn't involve staff who are responsible for enforcement and all of the different components with respect to the right-of-way. You know, to be clear, we're trying to strike a balance here. I think we have to think about what's reasonable for community standards to enforce. So, for example, it is not reasonable to expect them to go around with a field guide and know a pollinator plant from a, you know, something that's not that. And so, this really aimed to strike a balance between what was possible from an enforcement perspective and what is encouraging the things that we want to encourage.
Thank you.
Councilmember Malik. Further discussion? Councilmember Cornell.
Thank you to Councilmember Heckman for her long road to bring this to the table. As one of the cosponsors, I wanted to say, and somebody who serves on the Sustainability Commission, that the fact that it originated from environment sort of satisfied my, my desire to have that input, because it kind of came from them and then went into the practicality part of how do we actually implement these changes? And I'm wondering, since Mr. Reiser's up in the middle of the night looking to party with council, if he could speak just a little bit. The only questions that I got from members of sustainability or public today were around, why did we not look at a height limit for things like grass and, and pollinators? And I know to Councilmember Heckman's point, we can't have community standards out with a ruler measuring people's lawns, so we did focus on the safety of pedestrians, bicyclists, motorists. Can you speak to why that sightline was determined and how public safety informed that in terms of an enforcement piece, Mr. Reiser?
With respect to the private property, the height of grass, that's kind of hard to do, because obviously, you can measure it with a ruler, but a lot of people buy, you know, something or plant something other than Kentucky bluegrass, or ryegrass, or fescue, or Bermuda grass. They go out to, for instance, low-dee farms, and they get all these myriad grasses that they have. So, if we were to say your grass can't be over 11 inches, and we could, and we have that currently for lawn extensions, then it puts, we're going to get complaints about grass height when it's not, it's not like a turf grass, but rather, it's an, it's an ornamental grass or a prairie grass. So, that's, that's what makes grass tricky. I know we just talked about marijuana, and now we're talking about different kind of grass, but the tricky aspect of that is, how does community standards know what kind of, you know, what it is that's there? So, Councilmember Heckman and I had that discussion, where I brought up, you know, we could put in, we could leave something, if you choose to have grass, then it should only be a certain height, but then she responded with all the, all the things that people do have in their own private property. So, that's why that's not there. With respect to the 40, so does that answer that aspect of your question?
It does, Mr. Reiser, and I appreciated the joy with which you answered it, or at least the chuckles you listed. And so, I guess, could you speak a little bit more to the site triangle and why that was an important part of not only the enforcement, but the consideration of safety, and how that was, how we sort of married those two?
Yeah, the site triangle, other municipalities have introduced those. The site triangle is going from something we're moving away from, quote, "based on the criteria in the American Association of State Highway Transportation Officials' Policy on Geometric Design and Highway of Streets, Fifth Edition, 2005." So, it puts residents in the position of having to know what the ASHTO standards, that's abbreviated as ASHTO standards, which is a traffic engineering standard, when they want to decide what to put in their, in their, in their, in their yards. The 40-foot site triangle is easily measured by residents and easily enforced by community standards. You take the corner, and you go 40 foot one way, 40 foot the other way, you know, you put an orange cone, an orange cone, and you kind of sightline, kind of eyeball that, and you make sure that in that, in that triangle, it doesn't block, you know, bicyclists, pedestrians, that type of thing. And for ease of enforcement... it doesn't block, you know, bicyclists, pedestrians, that type of thing. And for ease of enforcement and ease of understandability, and ultimately, safety of pedestrians and bicyclists.
Thank you, Mr. Reiser.
Councilmember Watson?
Yeah, I'm grateful to all the work of the sponsors on this and to Attorney Reiser, as always. This has been a matter of great interest to Ward two constituents, and so for that reason, I'd like to be added as a cosponsor.
Thank you, Mayor. I also appreciate the, the work that's gone into this and certainly the, the goals behind it. I think that in reading correctly and listening to the conversation tonight, that this eliminates all height requirement on the, on turf, like turf grass in the property. And I'm really going to probably struggle to get to a yes on this for the very reason that throughout my time on council, I've had a number of instances where we've had properties in my ward that either have kind of an abandoned or absentee landlord, a vacant property with an out-of-town person who's not maintaining their, their property, and really has created kind of a nuisance for nearby neighbors when kind of pests and other things take over that, that yard. And so while I understand kind of the benefits of the natural and pollinator vegetation, you know, there's not a ton of benefit to kind of unmaintained turf grass. And so I'm, particularly at this point, I'll continue to having conversations with my ward and with colleagues, but I think I'm going to vote no tonight.
Just to that latter point, and I appreciate that. One, there's a certain aesthetic that we wrestle with in a, in a community and around, around those standards and, you know, what is a maintained yard versus a cultivated native garden. And we've talked a little bit about the struggle of defining the two, and that's, that's an important struggle that if we want to be able to encourage yards that we know are more environmentally friendly, more pollinator friendly, this is, this is where we've landed. I will say that, you know, even with those unmaintained yards, there actually is pretty good data and science around longer grasses is providing a community benefit. They've done studies in, in Wisconsin that I know informed our no-may practices here around what happens when grass gets a little bit longer. So maybe it will give folks a little bit of comfort at times to know that while that house is not home to anybody, that front yard is, is actually providing a, a slight benefit to, you know, the, to important, important creatures in our community as well that are, that are benefiting all of us and benefiting, you know, our agricultural practices as well.
Councilmember Watson?
Yes.
Councilmember Malik?
Yes.
Councilmember Redina?
No.
Councilmember Gauzy Edwin?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayer, absent?
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Cornell?
Yes.
Councilmember Dish?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrison?
Yes.
Motion carries.
D.C. three, resolution to rescind Resolution 325383 and approve a sub-recipient grant agreement with United Association of Plumbers and Pipe Thaters Local 190 to lead workforce development as part of the U.S. Department of Energy District Geothermal Grant in the Bryant neighborhood. Move by. Councilmember Dish, seconded by Councilmember Gauzy Edwin. Discussion, please, of D.C. three. Mr. DeHoney?
Thank you, Mayor. This is back in front of council, simply put, because the administration made a mistake. We are intentional and aggressively going after grant dollars. Sometimes we have long lead times to get prepared, and other times we only have a matter of days. We inadvertently listed the wrong sub-recipient initially, and when it was brought to our attention, we sought to make an administrative change, which we could not do. And so thus requiring it to come back before you for another vote. It's the administration's error. We extend our apologies for making it, but time to time, we are going to be in error. But we acknowledge it. Thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It is approved. D.C. four, resolution recognizing Howard Hanna Children's Free Care Fund of Michigan as a civic nonprofit organization operating in Ann Arbor for the purpose of obtaining a charitable gaming license. Move by Councilmember Cornell, seconded by Councilmember Redina. Discussion, please, of D.C. four. All in favor? All opposed? It is approved. D.B. one, resolution to approve revised bylaws of the Planning Commission. Move by Councilmember Dish, seconded by Councilmember Malik. Discussion, please, of D.B. one. Councilmember Dish.
We've already talked about this, which is a change to the way people can provide public comment in city planning commission meetings on items that do not have a public hearing attached to them. And these edits are fostering thoughtful public exchange by providing a dedicated public comment period for agenda items where city planning commission has little discretion because there are specific checklists that it follows for review, but where nonetheless, public comment is welcome and valuable. So we don't want to have public hearings on things where city planning commission doesn't have discretion because that can be very frustrating. But we do want to hear from the public. And the idea of a dedicated comment period, I believe, originated with council but was cheerfully taken up by city planning commission. And the reason is this, because you could have these comments happen in general public comment period, but that jumps around from one topic to another. And so this is a dedicated public comment period right before a planning commission considers one of these action items, which will provide an opportunity for deliberation. And so just letting you know that that got incorporated in the bylaws and asking you to approve it because you have to approve, we have to approve city planning commission bylaws.
Further discussion? I guess I'll also just say for, for the public's reference, it, it sounds like this public comment, this dedicated public comment period is a lot like a, a public hearing. The distinction, of course, is that there are procedural requirements for public hearings which impede the progress of things before the, before the planning commission. Having the trans, transmuting the pre, the prior public hearing on items where there was no specific planning commission discretion to these dedicated public comment periods reduces that, the procedural friction, enables things to move through the system faster, thus making staff's lives easier, petition lives easier, commissioners' lives easier. Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It is approved. We now come to public comment overflow. Public comment overflow, of course, is for folks who have signed up to speak at public comment for whom there was not time for them to speak prior to the, the balance of the meeting. Our first public speaker, to refresh your recollection, public speakers have three minutes in which to speak, whether here or online, so please pay close attention to the time clock. Our clerk or the time clock will notify you when 30 seconds are remaining and when your time is expired. When your time is expired, please conclude your remarks and see the floor. Our first public overflow speaker is Joshua Jacobson.
Yeah, good evening. Joshua Jacobson, 1755 South Franklin Court. I was inspired to write this comment after attending a Pause the Plan open house in my neighborhood last week. Of the couple dozen people present, I heard many concerns about the future of our city from people who by and large seem to care for the place that we live and for solving issues of affordability, transportation, and climate. That said, it seems like those who are opposed to this plan continuing are not swayed by the changes already brought about by delaying its adoption. After three drafts, a laundry list of revisions, and concessions directed by this council, those who object to this plan still call for restarting the process from the beginning, diverting money from city services, and delaying any solutions to the problems our city faces. And for what gain? Each of the plan's detractors takes their own issue with the plan, some in direct opposition to one another. I am unconvinced that a completely new plan or yet another draft would not be plagued with the same issues. In a room of 10 people, I'm sure you would get 10 separate visions for what the city would look like and how we should adapt to that change. Scale that up to a city of 100,000, and obviously, this plan is not going to satisfy everyone. "A good compromise leaves everyone mad," says Calvin from Bill Watterson's Calvin and Hobbes. That's the situation we're in right now. I'm mad about things I wish to see in the plan that aren't there. I'm sure you are too. But it's clear to me that the plan took into account a lot of varying perspectives and tries to balance those out as we plan for an impossible-to-know future. I would like to thank the thousands of people who have given their feedback at Top of the Park, at the library, at the open houses, in surveys, in emails, and in these very chambers. I would also like to thank the staff and consultants who have worked to incorporate that feedback into the third draft of the plan before you today and continue doing so over the coming months. Clearly, I wrote my comments before the passing of the plan and was hoping to speak in the earlier segment, but I'd like to thank you today for voting yes on C.A. three and to please continue gathering more feedback over the coming months and incorporate those insights in the next 63 days. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tracy Swinburne.
Thank you. I want to speak to you about concerns that not only has stakeholder input been limited, but also what has been presented has been cherry picked, and the resulting plan doesn't reflect the input of residents. Here's one example. When I read the first draft, I was stunned with this page asking, "What's the right amount of density?" This map described an overwhelming 79% of respondents were in favor of building up a lot, eight stories or more. Every green dot in this exercise, eight stories. It notes 390 total votes, but omits that participants were given 15 dots, so likely 20 to 30 people. At the library open house this summer, I asked planning staff about this overwhelming support for density by relatively few people than underpinning the rest of the plan's strategy and approach. I was told at the beginning, we mostly had input from a certain type of people, but now more people know about it and the input's different. But did the plan incorporate this feedback and adjust the strategies? Not in real meaningful ways about the approach on density. 350-plus residents participated in library sessions to give feedback on the plan this summer, and it was mixed feedback at best. The participants were split 41 for densifying residential zones and 39 opposed. You could go on and on about the different mixed sentiment. This is presented in the appendix of the report, but we're limited on the time here. The sticky note maps created at the summer library sessions are nowhere to be found in the main report or in the appendix. And this map is still in the plan to illustrate that residents overwhelmingly want to build up a lot, even when further engagement clearly proved otherwise. Residents at those library sessions rated the housing and neighborhood strategy a 2.63 out of five, with 233 responses. Even grading on a curve, 2.6 indicates the plan is not reflective of residents' values and needs substantive revision, not a light touch. I urge you to create a plan that is truly inclusive of stakeholder input and doesn't put feedback simply in the appendix. We were missing in this process here the standard-issue data and modeling of infrastructure and public costs, the development of illustrative scenarios of different quantities and locations of density. That kind of analysis is not expensive or unusual in this sort of a plan. And I don't know why it was omitted here, but that is what allows residents to imagine the different scenarios and possibilities and provide meaningful input and to be able to discuss it in a much more concrete and tangible way. With more open and informed stakeholder input, we can do better than a 2.6 out of five. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ali Hassaney. Ali Hassaney. Our next speaker is Eric Ivanic.
Mayor Eric Ivanic is on Zoom. Eric Ivanic, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, neighbors, city council members, and city staff. My name is Eric Ivanic, and I'm calling from the Third Ward to speak in support of consent agenda item three, which I'm very grateful that you all passed earlier this evening. Our comprehensive land use plan has been a long time in coming, and it shows the very best of what happens when a community comes together with care, patience, and purpose. It's been shaped over years through countless hours of thoughtful work and an incredible amount of input from residents. Our city planning commission and planning staff have poured their hearts and their minds into this effort, refining three drafts with care and transparency every step of the way. This plan is the blueprint for a better Ann Arbor, one that finally moves us past exclusionary zoning and opens the door, literally, to new neighbors, new families, and new opportunities. It's about building a city that welcomes, not walls off, where young families can afford to live near where they were, where diversity isn't just a value we talk about, it's something we live every day. It's also about protecting what we love most, our environment. Smarter, denser development means less sprawl, fewer long commutes, and less pressure to pave over the beauty that surrounds us. It means cleaner air, less traffic, and more time spent living rather than driving. Yes, change can be unsettling. Given this is a high-level plan that leaves details for future steps, it leaves space for some to stir fear and to push impossible, yet scary scenarios. Sadly, that fear mongering has become all too common in our national politics, and it's heartbreaking to see it here in our neighborhoods. But we're better than that. This plan is not the end. It's just one step with many more steps to come. It's a foundation for a fair, greener, more connected future, one that we'll build together for those who do and will one day call Ann Arbor home. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Adam Juskevich. Adam Juskevich.
Hello.
Oh, sorry.
My name is, my name is Adam Juskevich. I live in the Dickin neighborhood of the Fourth Ward. I'm a homeowner, and I was born and raised in Ann Arbor. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I did want to mention the, I think it was D.B. one, the change to some of the public hearing stuff at Planning Commission. I, I kind of prefer the way that Planning Commission does public hearings to this, keeping it together with the relevant agenda items, I think makes it a little easier to follow the meeting. But the main thing I was going to talk about, I was planning to speak in favor of C.A. three, but instead, I'm able to thank you for voting for it. I sent some of these thoughts to you via email, but wanted to expand on them a little. I think it's important to note that up to this point, a robust and extensive public input process the city has engaged in has been well above and beyond the required review period of 63 days. I'd like to thank Planning Commission, staff, and the consultants for the many opportunities we've had so far to make our voices heard and those opportunities still to come. It's been a long process, but there's light at the end of the tunnel. Like many Ann Arborites, I believe that several aspects of this plan do not go far enough. But I recognize and accept that this document represents a compromise with those members of our community who believe it goes too far. And like many, at times during this process, I have felt hurt and betrayed, seeing what I felt were unnecessary concessions incorporated into the plan. It's been a frustrating couple of years in that regard. I gather those on the other side of the aisle have felt similarly. But that's what living together in a community is about. We're never going to have a consensus on certain issues, and there's always going to be some give and take even when we largely agree. I'm glad to have found a group of friends and Neighbors for More Neighbors who have helped me understand and be more accepting of that give and take to move on and not let it make me cynical about the future of our city. Having a positive vision of that future is paramount, and having a community of people to share it with is wonderful. Looking at the draft, I think the result of this at times contentious process is good. Of course, I didn't get everything I wanted, but in the midst of a housing crisis and a climate crisis, it's great to see a plan that embraces abundant housing, strives to repair some of the worst problems of mid-20th century suburban development patterns, eliminates exclusionary single-family zoning, and aims to create a vision for an equitable, sustainable, affordable, and dynamic Ann Arbor for all. This draft supports these goals, and I believe it is ready to distribute for review. Thank you for voting yes on C.A. three.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alex Low.
Good evening. I was disappointed tonight to see how many people opposed the opening of the 63-day public comment period on the comprehensive land use plan. It feels quite undemocratic to me. But since you've already voted, and I thank you for, for your votes, my comment about the comprehensive plan is no longer relevant. So I would like to talk about the intersection of Green Road and Burbank Drive. There have been two crashes there so far this year that resulted in deaths or serious injuries. Back in 20- Back in 2019, staff recommended a reconfiguration of Green Road in this area for improved safety. The Transportation Commission agreed about this with a unanimous voice vote, but it was voted down by City Council. The following City Council members voted against the safety improvements on Green Road. Zachary Ackerman, Anne Bannister, Jack Eaton, Kathy Griswold, Jeff Hayner, Jane Lum, Elizabeth Nelson. Those seven former City Council members are, in my opinion, personally responsible for the casualties at this location. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eric Shalakow.
Mayor, he was supposed to be on Zoom, but, oh, I have him. Eric Shalakow, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Hello again, council. My name is Eric Shalakow from Ward 4. I am so, so happy to see Draft 3 of the club get approved, and I'm speaking tonight to urge you to keep the comp plan moving full steam ahead and keep embracing abundance, density, and more neighbors. I feel incredibly lucky to be able to afford to live in Ann Arbor, but luck should not have been the deciding factor. I bought my home in September 2022 for $260,000. If I sold it today, my home's estimated to sell for $311,000. That is a 19.6% increase in just three years. I felt the ladder actively being pulled up for me back then, but I was able to just able to grab the last rung. When I talk to my friends that want to be here, the ladder is nowhere in sight. That disparity is going to worsen based on past policy decisions. It doesn't make me happy to know that I benefit from the same scarcity that delights our local landlord to hoard housing, but it doesn't have to be that way. Policy got us into this mess, and policy can get us out of it. We have to leave scarcity in the past and embrace abundance. Trying to fix the housing crisis without building more housing is like trying to fix a famine without any food. We know that we can have more density and amenities all over town because we've done it before. My partner and I have turned our townhouse into a lovely home, and it has easy access to transit, friendly neighbors of all backgrounds, and some restaurants and cafes within walking distance. It's not the 15-minute neighborhood of my dreams, but it's getting there. I want to share that with everyone that's already here and anyone else that wants to be here. Everyone should be able to experience Ann Arbor with a rich urban fabric that's inclusive, sustainable, and where we don't need to rely on cars to get around. I thank you for all your time and hard work, and I applaud you for engaging the community the entire way, and remind you that the majority of Ann Arbor wants density and will get behind you based on the platforms that you ran on in the first place. Thank you for listening, and I hope you have a great evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Blaine Coleman.
If you ever wondered, if you ever wondered what you would do during a Holocaust, Ann Arbor City Council, you are doing it now. You're doing it now while Israel commits a Holocaust on the Palestinian people, most especially in Gaza. Even now, after the ceasefire, Israel has murdered 100 people in Gaza after the ceasefire. In Lebanon, after the ceasefire, Israel has launched 100 bombing raids after the ceasefire in Lebanon. And this city council has made it very clear that they're going to keep stonewalling this resolution against military aid to Israel until every last Palestinian is dead. This city council, the Ann Arbor City Council, has made it crystal clear that they are going to keep stonewalling this resolution against military aid to Israel until every last Palestinian is dead. This city council has stonewalled the resolution for way over 20 years, and in the process, Ann Arbor City Council has broadcast loud and clear how they think Arabs should be dealt with. By their actions, Ann Arbor City Council has let you know that Arabs should continue to be massacred, genocided, and holocasted, and the role of city council is to make damn sure that it happens without one single resolution against it. This is the same Ann Arbor City Council that jumped to pass a Ukraine resolution recently, but when it comes to the lives of Palestinians, this city council is 100,000% in favor of genocide and Holocaust against the Palestinian people. This city council pretends to care about housing, but with its tax dollars and its political weight, this city council makes damn sure that almost the entire housing stock of the Gaza Strip has been bombed down to the ground. This city...
Thank you. Our next speaker is Moshe Savi-Beswahani.
Mayor Taylor, I really, really expect you to pronounce my name right. My name is Moshe Savi-Beswahani. Replay this and learn it, because you make a fool of yourself pronouncing some blah, blah, blah. No, I'm Moshe Savi-Beswahani, and I have stood here for over 20 years demanding that this city council cuts off military aid to Israel. Yesterday alone, on Sunday, when you guys were busy eating your burgers and fries, Israel dropped 153 tons of bombs on an area the size of Detroit. If this does not bother you and does not push you to act to stop your government, I don't know what will. I am losing my faith in humanity. Israel has dropped over 100,000 tons of bombs on Gaza in two years. If this doesn't move you to pass a simple resolution that says cut off the money to the fucking butchers, if it doesn't move you to do that, I invite you to look inside you and think, would anyone believe you when you say you care for housing in Ann Arbor? When everybody sees in the past 20 years blacks have been pushed out, Hispanics have been pushed out, middle-income people, my neighbor had to leave to, I don't know, some dump in Michigan because they could not afford to live on my street. These are truths about Ann Arbor City Council. They don't care about Palestine, and they don't care about your housing. Anyone out there who believes them when they go on and on about sustainability, affordability, don't fool yourselves. These guys do not represent humanity. They represent developers. Everyone knows that by their action. They will not give a damn about dioxide contamination in our waters because they've had every chance to fix it, and they don't. And least of all, they care about human life, particularly in Gaza. I want to invite those of you out there whom I have to believe you're there. I want to invite you to come and fight them, vote them out. Don't let them take the space, shut people like me up, and do business as usual and fill their pockets. These guys fill their pockets when they do things that benefit the industry, the developers. They do not give a shit about us. If their actions has not convinced you, only in the past 20 years, that they don't care about us, I don't know what will. Cut off military aid to Israel and learn my name, okay? And don't ever fucking thank me!
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Jeremy Haley.
Learn my name. Shame on you, all of you.
Ma'am?
Jeremy Haley, it's you, Tanja. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for moving the glass of the public comments up before the close session and whatnot. Narratives. I recently saw a movie called Code 3, and it was about ambulance and whatnot. There's a scene in that movie, once it came on, it was supposed to be a comedy at a huge change, the whole demeanor of the whole theater that you were on, because it was a pretty packed theater. There's a scene where the ambulance driver, ambulance were trying to get to a scene before the police showed up to where they said it was a six-foot-six-tall, 300-pound black man who was having a psychotic episode. And he was having the episode because, as they described it, that he was only given 20 pills a month for his psychiatric condition, and this happens every month, and every month because he only has 20 pills. And when the ambulance showed up and they were trying to get him into the ambulance, the police showed up, and it was three white policemen, and basically the cops didn't do nothing. They basically just drew their firearms and started pointing at the black man, and paramedic standing in front of him. And I asked, last time I was here, I talked to the couple deputies, officers that were here, and told them that that's the narrative they're putting out in Hollywood about what officers are still doing and how they're responding to these instances. And I'm standing up against that because some people actually still believe that. These officers that I talked to said that's not what they do, or the ones that were here at that time. That's not their protocol, but that is out there still. And it's a narrative that has a start. And Hollywood, if you read a book, Hollywood Babylon, it brings up the history of Hollywood and how it's used for propaganda and other things. Another thing on that, there's a book out there, Sultan, The Truth, about Sigmund Freud, Sigmund Freud's Seduction Theory. His first iteration came out as, because he was talking to young children, boys and girls, who were being abused, lusted, right, by people, family members. When he went to his higher-ups, his higher-ups did not like that result. He changed his result to where the kids were being blamed for their actions, and what do they do to cause that action upon them? He's a modern-day godfather of gaslighting. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cord, we have the pleasure of a closed session today.
Apologies, but yes, I am requesting a closed session tonight based on MCL 15.268, Section 8.1D, to consider the purchase or lease of real property, and 8.1H, to discuss privileged and confidential memos provided to council on October 15th and 16th respectively. Thank you.
Can a motion, please, to go into closed session on that basis? Moved by Councilmember Ackman, seconded by Councilmember Cornell. Discussion? Roll call vote, please, starting with Councilmember Watson.
Yes.
Councilmember Malik?
Yes.
Councilmember Rodina?
Yes.
Councilmember Gazi Edwin?
Yep.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayer, absent.
Yes.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Cornell?
Yes.
Councilmember Dish?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We're in closed session.[1420.33]
Now, motion please go back to open session. Look like that for the second like that. Discussion, on favor, opposed, for an open session. And motion, uh...
What?
City Attorney.
Oh, no!
Oh, we got, oh, rules. We have force the Court of Superior Communications, which is as referred to in the future brief. The Court support you, that's what I think. Second, my top member, first discussion, on favor, proposed. Which was approved. Ms. Court, we have the pleasure of communications from our attorney, City Attorney.
I would like to express my appreciation for the diligence that you showed and worked late on an important matter, but other than that, nothing. Thank you.
I'm sure, uh, we have more public comment. I mean, Mr. Attorney, do like, council member.